Monday, October the 4th. It is 5:35 PM. And I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call a roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Coach. Ellison.
Floris Cale.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Bradshaw.
Present.
Tobias.
Here.
All right, six members present, we have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience wishes to come forward and speak to please do so. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments period. It is now closed. Next up, executive session.
Pursuant to Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics, where one pending, or complicated litigation, or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071, homestead exemptions and other tax rate freezes and exemptions, Veterans Drive, Putt, and Roundabout, 40402 and 404 South Burleson, City Lights and Kyle Marketplace subdivision development MOU, second possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of the real estate pursuant to Section 551.072, West Center Street properties acquisition, three, personal matters pursuant to Section 551.074. Convene to executive session pursuant to Section 550187, Texas Government Code, to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project Phoenix. Take action items on and discuss. We are now in executive session.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are now adjourned. I'll let the tapes switch and then we'll start our regular meeting. All right, good evening, everyone. The day is Monday, October 4th. It is 7:02 PM, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call a roll?
Mitchell.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Ellison. Floris Cale.
Present.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Tobias.
Here.
All right, seven members present, we have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor likes to go ahead and approve the minutes for city council meeting, special meeting on September 21st and regular meeting the same date.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Tobias, seconded by Councilman Rizzo, that we approve the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit it to either myself or the city secretary. I have three that have registered already. First up, Mr. Jeff Thompson.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Jeff Thompson, leader with the Corridor Interfaith Alliance for Families. I was very pleased to see that at the September 7th city council meeting, that there was a proclamation designating September as Hunger Action Month. Residents of Kyle were encouraged to support the Hayes County Food Bank with donations, and that was very appropriate. I appreciated the proclamation. And I believe that that's a great indication that the city of Kyle itself is ready to provide funds for the food bank and other nonprofits that meet the needs of the most vulnerable people in our city of Kyle. The next step to accomplish that is the formation of a human services board or commission to advise the council about distribution of any funds that may be designated in future budgets. That's number 23 on the agenda this evening. Now, I consider myself fortunate to be a resident of such a growing, progressive, exciting city like Kyle, but I am aware that in a city that grows this fast, sometimes there is a tendency to forget about the marginalized folks, and in fact, can make them even more marginalized. So I call on you this evening to establish a human services board or commission so that no one will be left behind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up, Joe Diaz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name's Joe Diaz, I'm a longtime resident of Kyle. I've lived here for a little over 40 years. My wife is an original Kyleite. We live down here off of Center Street in Wood and Wallace addition. My complaint, I have a complaint about the recently reestablished Real House Bar and the amount of noise that that bar and the outside, I guess, stage produces. It is quite unnerving to be hearing such loud noise on a Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night. And we were thankful that this past weekend, we had a quiet weekend, and we were able to be in our yard in the evening, but it's out of control, simply as that. The only, the only thing we, we are able to do is, we call the police, and we complain about that noise. And hopefully that something's going to be done, because the decibel setting, whatever is being allowed is, if it's 85 decibels, then it's, it's in the harmful area of noise for individuals. Standard decibel settings are between 55 and 45 with residential areas. So if it's set at 85, they're way past that margin. Anyway, that is the one thing. And the other thing is, is something that I would like to request. I was just talking to Lieutenant De Nodis, and one of the things I'd like to see is, if we could have some police officer cars, you know, do a little drive around in, in here in the old town, here, original Kyle. We never see police officers driving around looking at things. We have a lot of speeding cars up and down Center Street and on Veterans Drive. We have a lot of noise from these boombox cars. We have some crazy character that drives up and down Center Street maybe every, every couple of 10 days or so, and he's got some kind of bang noise that he makes. I mean, it is extremely loud, and I've been trying to catch him on film, but I haven't been able to. But we could have a little bit of, you know, patrolling in and around here in downtown Kyle and in neighborhoods. We have a lot of people who don't know what a stop sign is, and it's, it's right there where we live, nobody ever stops at the stop sign at the corner of Lockhart and Wallace. That's, that's generally a roll-through stop. And at the time, when traffic is occurring at 5 o'clock, or when the kids are getting out of school, can be very dangerous. So appreciate your time, hope that something can be done about the extreme noise that we are being made to endure, which is not very easy.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Melissa Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name's Melissa Rodriguez, I'm the executive director for the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center, and I'm also here to speak on behalf of the creation of a human services commission, Agenda Item 23. And just to reiterate what was stated is that the, these services that are provided by nonprofits like ours are provided for the entire community regardless of economic status, gender, where they live, where they come from, it doesn't matter. And just a reminder, just to let you know, the people that we've served, 390 of those were Kyle residents. 123 were victims of family violence. I'm wearing purple because October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, you will be presenting a proclamation on behalf of that particular issue, which has become unfortunately an increasing issue in our community. Again, speaking to the growth, the more growth, the more need that we see across the board. One of the other things I wanted to point out was our children's advocacy services, these are victims of child abuse, and primarily child sexual abuse, unfortunately. Last year in Kyle, we provided 261 children with services from the city of Kyle specifically. And that is the highest served number in our entire community, more than even San Marcos. They are number one served, are our child services. And for adult services, Kyle is our second largest served. So we do ask for that investment, not only back to providing those critical services, but as, seeing it as the public safety issue that it is, that also speaks volumes to caring about the health and well-being of the community members. So we absolutely would be in support of the creation of a commission. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, that is all of the forms that I have filled out. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak?
Mayor, council members, thank you for listening to me. I think last, the last time I came and I talked about in behalf of the safety center that, how the plans had been done for that, we voted for one thing, and then it's gone elaborated to more. And then the last me, and the last meeting that y'all had, you talked about the house on 104 Burleson, and y'all had a plan, and then now it's gotten beyond. It seems to be a habit that we have something in place that's going to happen, and then it gets blown up. And I, I think at the rate it was at three stories or whatever, I still think that y'all have a parking problem when you have. I don't think that place has enough parking in behind it if y'all do it in the front, you don't have enough parking either. With the parking around the square, that's not even enough for what you've got right now. And I just want you to be aware that it's, I don't think it's safe for, for our community to have that many businesses, but when you don't have enough parking in the city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. Citizen comments is now closed. All right, next up, appointments, consider nominations and take action to appointments of the Board of Adjustments to fill two vacancies. The two nominees are Patricia Palacios and Matthew Lancaster. These were the applicants who came forward, so they were all interviewed by the committee. The committee made a unanimous recommendation to bring them forward. I believe their applications and resumes are attached in the backup. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilman Floris Cale.
Thank you. Are they here? Did they?
I do not know.
All right. Well, how do I ask questions? Is either Matthew Lancaster or Patricia Palacios here? All right, thank you.
So I had questions as well. I know, so the, the policy does state for the candidates to be at the council meeting. It says it right in the policy. So I think we should try and meet that as much as possible when we have these appointments. So I guess the only question I have that aren't for Palacios and Lancaster is, who made up the board that reviewed and interviewed the candidates, and how many total candidates did we have overall?
There were two seats available, there were two applicants, and there were two interviews. The board that interviewed them was the president, president or the chair of the Board of Adjustments, city manager, who designated I as opposed to James Earp. So James Earp was there, and myself.
I guess we don't have a staff liaison for that one?
No.
Okay, so it's the three. Okay, and only two people applied entirely. How long did we have the application process open? And what means did we use to advertise for this?
I can't speak to how long it was open, but we did go through all of our outreach channels, including the newsletter, social media, it was posted on the website as well.
And can somebody from staff speak to how long the application process was open?
Councilmember Ellison, James Earp, Assistant City Manager of Administrative Services, for the record. I don't know the date that it was published. I do know that we were in conversations about trying to get enough candidates to do interviews for at least 30 days, if not longer. This was something that I believe the community development director, Kuntz, was working on prior to his departure. So it was at least posted prior to that. So I would feel confident in saying 30 days. I don't know the exact date that it was actually opened.
Understood. No, that's all my questions I had for staff. My other questions were certainly for Ms. Palacios and Mr. Lancaster. I would appreciate it going forward for the commissions and boards that we have them present, even virtually, I think would be more than satisfactory for what we need to do, but that's part of what this process is, is having them present. So I'm going to make a motion that we postpone the consideration of nominations for this board until the next scheduled agenda.
Moved by Councilman Ellison that we postpone this item. Seconded by Councilman Floris Cale, is there any discussion on the motion?
Mayor, I did reach out to Ms. Palacios, that's how we pronounce her last name, and I hadn't heard anything back from her. I was hoping that she would be here, because I did read her resume and her application, but again, I think having them both here, to where we could be able to get some questions answered, would, would help on that vote.
May I ask if they were informed? I don't want to, I don't want them to look bad if they knew, I mean, if they didn't know.
Right. So whenever I reached out to them to let them know that they were going to go forward for nomination, at the time, we didn't know if they would be on this agenda or not. So I suggested that they watch the agenda posting, and if they were on, then to attend either in person or by video. So I guess that that didn't work, so going forward, I'll have to reach out to them again directly beforehand and confirm that there are going to be attendance.
Thank you.
The reason that this item came forward is because we currently do not have a quorum available on the Board of Adjustments. So, you know, I was told that we had applications, that the period, it had been posted, so there wasn't a whole lot of involvement on my end, but I can say that, you know, the interviews were, were, were solid. I'm sad they're not here as well. So they've got a Board of Adjustments meeting they're trying to have. Does, does anybody have any insight as to whether or not delaying this item will impact the, the meeting that they are trying to set? They have like five or six different items coming before.
My instinct is, we can go ahead and start posting, because there's public notice requirements for those items. So we can go ahead and post those as if they were appointed tonight, with the anticipation that they would be appointed, and if they're not, and we can't make, then we would just have to cancel the items. That would keep us from delaying the items that need to come before the zoning board of adjustments any further than like the first meeting in December.
So is our policy going to be, if the applicants are not present, we are going to set as a, as a, as a precedent, that we, they will just be postponed until such time as that they can be here? That's not the precedent that we've set up till this point, so.
Right, but the policy, written in the policy, it states for them to be present.
It's a fair point. I'm just, I'm just trying to ask, because it seems like what, what y'all are proposing is a shift in how we respond, so that if they're not here, because I'm, I'm certain that it wasn't impressed upon them that if they weren't here, the item would be delayed, so it is paramount if they actually, you know, so I don't know, this is not even the, you know, we changed our day, maybe conflicted with schedules, I, I just don't know, but I'd be, you know.
My alternative is either to postpone or to vote no. That's all we can do. I mean, without being able to ask questions, I can't, I can't make a vote, so I'm, I'm okay with voting, but my vote is going to be no.
Okay. Well, the motion, second, is to postpone the item until the next meeting. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I'll just say, I, I think it's more of a, I certainly understand your comment about the precedent, but I think the precedent has usurped the policy, and so I think this is an attempt to get back in line with what the policy states. And it's, I mean, I've, I've mentioned this before in past boards and commissions, appointments where they haven't been here, so this isn't the first time I've brought this up either.
Yeah, I, I think it's a fair position, we just need to be consistent with it, so. Any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Nay. Rizzo, I didn't catch your vote.
Nay.
All right, motion fails, four to three. I, I prefer to see them approved, just because we have business at hand and they were qualified and recommended. I do think your, your point is noted, though, so, you know, we need to make sure we're, Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, I, you know, I've got to agree with Dex on that point. I think that we should be able to vent people when they come in and ask those questions, because we're making really important decisions up here for appointments. Unfortunately, this time, the only reason I, I'm allowing these appointments to go forward is because it wouldn't press upon them to be here. But in the future, I think we need to press upon all appointments, they need to be here. We need to be able to ask these questions moving forward, and I think we need to be consistent with that across the board, so this time, I'm not going to fail them, because I think we might have not pressed that upon the two applicants, but moving forward, we need to start doing that as staff, as a council. So that's the reason I'm going to go ahead and approve them this time.
My concern is also the fact that Councilmember Tobias reached out to one and never received a response. So I think it's kind of disheartening that we're going to go ahead and say yes, when we haven't been given the opportunity to speak with them, all, just to get things rolling or to get things going. I don't think that's the appropriate reason.
Referencing my email to her, I did state to Ms. Palacios that I did review her application and was impressed, and was, was in support of that, but again, I would still would have liked to have her here, and still have been able to make it fair for everybody who had questions to be able to get them answered.
Second. Moved by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Protem, that we approve Patricia Palacios and Matthew Lancaster. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion carries four to three. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number Four, consideration of the reappointment of Chuck Conan to seat three of the Park and Recreation Board for a two-year term, to expire September 30th, 2023. Ms. Espinoza.
Good evening, mayor and council. Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. So we have an exciting night for parks, because we get to recommend reappointment of one park board member and then appointment of two brand-new park board members. So first up, we would like to have the consideration of appointment of Chuck Conan to seat three of the Park and Recreation Board for another two-year term. Mr. Conan is currently serving in his second term, so this is the completion of his fourth year. Mr. Conan is interested in serving for another two years. His contributions to the park board have included working with the Parks Department to offer archery lessons and a kids' fishing derby. Mr. Conan has reviewed his original application and questions, and has updated his certifications to include that he's a Texas Parks and Wildlife Angler Instructor, a Gold Award Angler Area Chief, a basic archery instructor, and basic archery instructor trainer. Mr. Conan is here in person, and our park board chair, Amanda Stark, I'll turn it over to her for her recommendation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Amanda Stark, the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Board. Chuck Conan has been a great asset to the board. We appreciate and value his opinions and input. We have for two years and would like to keep him on for another two years, so it is my recommendation to keep him on the Parks Board for another two years.
Thank you, Ms. Stark. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Councilman Floris Cale.
Yes, thank you. Can I have you come up, please? I'm going to admit that I'm really excited that you have chosen to stay for a reappointment. With that said, I just want to make sure that that's where you want to be, and then I want to reassure you that our dais has plans to work together. And so I, I just want to do whatever I can to keep you, but I want to make sure you want to be there first.
Yes, definitely. And if you had asked a question about what did I hope to see differently, it would have been what you just said, work together.
Okay.
Councilman Ellison.
Free to go.
Not yet. These two down here want to ask more questions.
Come on back, Star. Good to see you again, Mr. Conan. A pleasure to meet you the other few weeks ago at your board meeting. So, one, thank you for your service. Is this your, would this be your second two-year term or your third two-year term? How long have you been on?
Third.
It would be your third, so you've served us for four years, and us, I mean, the city of Kyle. Well, thank you for your service, first and foremost, for that. I have a great respect for those that serve on our boards and commissions. So what brought you back to decide that you wanted to do a third term on Parks Board?
Well, the rules, I guess, are being accepted to allow a third term. It used to be two terms, and then you were not eligible for reimport, for reappointment. So I never said that I didn't want to serve, it just looked like the rules weren't going to let me.
Gotcha. So let me ask the question a different way. So certainly the rules changed, but you could have denied the reappointment. What is it that makes you so adamant, and what is your passion about serving on the Parks Board?
Well, it, I mean, you learn as you go, so I think I've learned quite a bit, I feel like I've contributed quite a bit, and reassured and re-energized by what seems to be the council and city staff's willingness to work together, maybe a little bit more than we have in the past.
Certainly. And we had a good conversation, and I'm going to reference a little bit of it, if you don't mind here. So certainly appreciated your candor and feedback that in our conversation we had. And you mentioned one thing that's already been talked about is more cooperation and collaboration with the council. In your mind, that's one part of my question, I have a second part, but in your mind, what is that collaboration and better cohesiveness and everything that's kind of being brushed over here, what does that actually look like to you?
Well, in private and in public, I've heard council members say that they wish they had more citizen involvement in everything, but in parks and, and parks projects specifically. And it struck me as ironic that we have seven people that volunteered to be interviewed and serve on the Parks Board, and they haven't been asked for input very often. Ironic, maybe. That's something, hopefully, we'll, I'll say, they used to do it that way.
And then, the other question I had for you is, when we, we had our discussion, you talked about the advertisement of the meetings, and that, you know, y'all- And that, you know, y'all have a standing time where you all meet, but it seems not to be present on the website or anything until there is an actual agenda, is what it seems to be the case. So would there be anything, and I guess this is less for Mr. Conan and maybe for Mariana and Scott, would there be a case where we could, you know, put these meetings on the website as upcoming, that they're standing meetings? And then, of course, if there is no agenda, then we remove them that way rather than vice versa that we do it? Is there some kind of method behind that madness, I guess?
There's an easy solution. It's listed on our website that there's a standing meeting the last Monday of the month. But we can make sure and go through the event calendar and make sure this is an event every month.
Fantastic. I think that would be great. Would that, kind of, in the discussion we had, Mr. Conan, would that be more in line with what you were hoping to see as far as, not only for the board members, but any public that wants to know that there are upcoming board meetings?
It would definitely help.
Do you have any other suggestions that you might recommend with that?
Not this time.
Gotcha, gotcha. And then my final question, any other feedback for the council while you have us now, something you would like to hear from us or like to see us do more and how to better create a more collaborative and cohesive relationship with our Parks Board?
Well, I think we, excuse me, I think we pretty much covered it. I mean, my opinion is that, like I said, if we want more citizen involvement in parks and park projects, let's start with the Parks Board. I mean, that's seven folks that volunteered. And I think putting the meetings on will let people know.
Certainly.
That's pretty much it. Reappoint me, obviously.
Yeah, reappoint you. Yeah, that would be the first thing to improve, right? All right. Thank you, Mr. Conan. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilor Tobias.
Let's just have one real quick, sir, if you don't mind. I don't mean to put you in the hot seat, but if this goes through to be your third appointment, correct? What would be your overall goal while serving on this board? What would be your overall goal that you would see for your Parks Department, Parks Board?
That's a, that's a great question. Hopefully, I can have a great answer for it. I just like parks and like outdoor stuff. And I started long ago with Texas Parks and Wildlife, going to actual classes to learn how to teach people, like to fish and for archery. I'd like to see more events like that in Kyle and more of outdoors-type events, not so much. I mean, more of the hunting and fishing stuff. That's kind of my excitement button.
Great, it's a good answer. That's what I wanted to hear, to see that you would implement more of those programs, especially for our youth here in the city. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Mr. Conan? All right, it's been motion by Councilperson Ellison, seconded by Councilwoman Flores-Cale. That we approve Chuck Conan to seat three of the Parks and Rec Board. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number five, consider nominations for appointments to the Parks and Rec Board to fill two vacancies. James Miller, Laura Lee Harris, Ms. Espinoza.
For this item, we had a total of seven applicants. All the applicants were called for interviews. Six of the applicants accepted, and five actually showed up for their interviews. Myself, Assistant City Manager Jerry Hendricks, Park Board Chair Amanda Stark, and Councilmember Yvonne Flores-Cale were on the interview panel. So with that said, it is my pleasure to introduce the next two appointees to the Park and Recreation Board for consideration to serve a two-year term. First, I would like to introduce James Jimmy Miller. He is joining us virtually, since he is out of the state from training for work, for seat six. Mr. Miller considers himself an outdoorsman and is an avid user of the Plum Creek Trail. Mr. Miller has a strong interest in mountain biking and is a sales and business professional. Then I would like to introduce Dr. Laura Lee Harris. Ms. Harris has a background in Health and Human Services. In addition to over 30 years in working for nonprofits, Ms. Harris has served for the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Halton City. She is currently a Hayes County Master Naturalist with a strong interest in our trail system. Our park board chair, Amanda Stark, is here. Laura Lee Harris is here, and of course, Jimmy Miller is on the call if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Councilmember Tobias.
Yes, Mr. Miller, good evening. Same question that I gave the gentleman earlier. What would be your overall goal that you would want to see serving on the Parks and Rec Board?
Sorry about the lighting in here. I'm in a hotel, and there's not many lights in this hotel room except for a couple of lamps. So I guess what I really want to see is, we moved to the city June of 2020, right in the middle of the pandemic. And one thing that I realized is lots of green space, and the city was investing lots of money in green space and parks facilities. Not only the trails, right? As a mountain biker or a runner, I love the trails part. But there's lots of other facilities around the city. So what I really want to see is more people out enjoying those things and exploring those items. So, you know, being a kid of the 80s, as kids, we were the ones that got out and found the parks and found the trails and did all the fun stuff. Now, it's hard to get folks out. So, you know, during my interview, I talked about the possibility of doing like a scavenger hunt or some things like that to get people out of their houses and go and explore all the things that you guys are doing, all the money that's being invested in the community. And on top of it, you know, having a master trail system that connects everything together certainly is going to help. And I think that what the system really needs is someone to go promote it. And the best way to promote it is to say, hey, everyone, come out and let's do it together, right, in a community, bring people from out of town. So that's what I want to see. I want to see, I want for everyone else in the city of Kyle and surrounding areas to see what I see. And to see the money that's invested and all the excitement that I have, I want that to be infectious. And I think that you need someone to be a leader of that infection, and I want to be that guy. So that's what I'd like to see.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I believe it's Dr. Harris, correct? Did she hear? Ms. Harris. Good evening, ma'am. Thank you. And it would also be the same question as far as what goals would you want to see serving on the Park and Rec Board?
I'm really interested in quality of life in Kyle. I served for seven years on Halton City Planning and Zoning, and I watched my own commission neglect Parks and Recreation. And I was very disappointed in that. I felt like that was crucial to the well-being of our citizens. I'm a Blue Zones advocate. If you know about Blue Zones, it's a study that was done through National Geographic that did a study worldwide of what conditions enhance life, what conditions create longevity in healthy people. And there are basically nine things which we can, as a community, integrate into our planning. I would like to see us begin to adopt some of those principles, which we already have a number of them. I'm thrilled with the trails plan. I'm a Hayes County Master Naturalist, and the quality of our environment for wildlife is crucial. Just walking through our Plum Creek Lake trails, I've got a list of 70 birds. It's just that it's not even a complete list. This is, we're on the flight path. It's important. The trees are important. The environment's important. The water is important. Plum Creek itself is important to the whole watershed and to the San Marcos River. So these are some of the things that I'm really passionate about and would like to be on the commission to be able to serve the community in that way.
Great, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. And again, the reason why I ask those questions is I want to show that the people that we're appointing have a desire to really appreciate our open green spaces and make sure we have the right people that can help lead us way into developing our parks. So thank you all for your answers.
Councilor Rizzo.
Ms. Harris, I just want to thank you for applying and for your service as well, your future service. I first met Ms. Harris a few years back when I was up in a family in Plum Creek, and she came out and offered some assistance and started talking to me about Blue Zones. So I know her passion. So definitely, I'm excited about you serving, and thank you for your application.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Ellison.
Mayor, I'd like to, before I make my motion, I just want to state again that I think the current policy that we have in place for boards and commissions and the exclusive policy, and we should update it and change it to make it more inclusive. I do appreciate the effort that was put into this particular review. Seven applicants, reached out to all seven, scheduled interviews with six of them, and five showed up. So I certainly appreciate that effort that was made in getting all the, those that applied. Quick question, how long was the period open for this board and commission? And was it the same, I'm assuming, with a nod, is the same medium that we used on the previous one?
It was posted on the city website and on the Facebook, and it was open for just over a month. So we advertised for just over a month, and then took about three weeks for interviews.
Certainly. And I do remember seeing both of these on there, just for the record. So with that being said, as much as I do not like the policy in which we appoint people to boards and commissions, and I think it should be changed, and this council should make the effort to change it, based on how this one was done, I'd like to make the motion to approve both Mr. James Miller and Dr. Laura Lee Harris to the open vacancies on the Parks Board.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ellison, seconded by Councilwoman Rizzo. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just a, just a final, quick thank you, Councilwoman Rokeil, for filling in for me. Work got in the way, so I wasn't able to attend. So thank you for filling in. I really appreciate it.
Totally my pleasure. They were super, and all of them are really great. It was a hard decision. But the two that we picked are great. And I guess I do have a quick question to staff. Do we advertise these positions in the newspaper? I know newspapers are very old and cliche, but I know there's people that read the newspaper, and they've asked, like, why, if it is, or will we in the future post these kind of openings and that?
When we have, Samantha Armbruster, Director of Communications, when we have multiple openings across different boards and commissions, we will do a press release, and oftentimes, those are picked up by the newspapers. To date, at least in the last year, we haven't taken out paid advertising for these openings, but something we can consider.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, City Managers Report.
Mayor, Council, Scott Siller, City Manager, for the record. On the City Manager's Report this evening, we've got multiple items to discuss. The first one is Hispanic Heritage Month, and I'd like to bring up Paul Phelan.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. And just to follow up, and I know we spoke about it a couple of meetings ago, and we're at the National Hispanic Heritage Month, but we do have, still have the Vaquero, the Genesis of the Texas Cowboy exhibit. So if you have not seen that, also the Voces Americanos, the Latino Literature in the United States. And that will be starting October the 13th through November the 6th. And the Vaquero exhibit ends on October 13th. In addition, we have a Dia de los Muertos storytime that's coming up on October 29th at 10:30 a.m. And I know we were thinking about doing the, an interview with Marcelina Rodriguez Garcia. And I know Grant Bowling actually did an excellent interview, and I don't know if that's been put out there yet, but I got to see it, and it's just fantastic. So if you haven't had a chance, take a look at that. And anyway, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Paul. Next, we have a recap on the Dialogue for Peace and Progress. And Councilmember Ellison?
Certainly. It was my honor again to moderate and host the Fourth Dialogue for Peace and Progress. This one was celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. We did this on last Friday evening. And if you missed it, the great thing about doing anything in this room is it's recorded and archived to watch on Facebook and our City of Kyle YouTube channel. So if you missed this hour and a half-long discussion, maybe a little bit more, but I certainly encourage any and everybody to go and review that. I see my man Benito in the back there. He served on the panel, did an excellent job representing Team Kyle on there. And it was certainly my honor to have you, Benito. You did an excellent job, and thank you for wanting to participate in that. But yeah, great discussion about a number of different topics relating to Hispanic Heritage Month and just other personal items. I learned a great deal throughout it, and I think it is very informative and enlightening. And certainly, the panelists came with some very thoughtful ideas and discussion on that. So if you have a chance to, certainly check that out and see that there. And I want to thank the council, first and foremost, for always being supportive of these and with your encouragement and allowing me to move forward with these, but also staff and the culture that we have here at the City of Kyle and Team Kyle Scott. Starting with you, I appreciate you allowing the employees throughout the city to participate in these and share what's on their mind and be open, honest about things. So thank you for that. And thank you for our community of being supportive of this as well. We're always looking for new ideas and panelists as well. So certainly reach out to the city or even myself if you have any interest in that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Ellison. Next, I'd like to bring up Mariana Espinoza, Director of Parks and Recreation for the Founder's Day Parade.
All right, everyone, we have our Founder's Day Parade this Saturday. Parade starts at 10 o'clock. And then, I'm starting from Greg Clark Park and coming downtown. So immediately following the parade, we have our City of Kyle Birthday Bash on Burleson Street. And we invite all to join us. And then leading into November with our Veterans Day Parade on Saturday, November 13th, starting at noon, having a flyover at the Greg Clark Park afterwards, and then fireworks around 5:50.
Questions about the parade?
This Saturday, 10 o'clock.
Where does everybody start at?
The parade's starting at Greg Clark Park and heading down this way.
On which side?
Coming straight down Center Street.
Coming down Center Street? Okay.
Yes, sir. All right, and then it is October, so happy October. All of our online virtual programming for the month has started. So that includes, citizens in the city can enter a best pet costume contest, pumpkin carving contest, yard decorating contest, and overall costume contests. And we have two in-person events. One on October 15th, it is the Addams Family Movie at the Lake. It's free at sundown. And then on Saturday, October 23rd, from 9:00 to 12:00, we have our annual Downtown Street Retreat. Thank you.
Thank you. This next slide, you will see that we do have ongoing board and commission opportunities, Planning and Zoning Commission and the Library Board. So we just discussed where those are located on our website, but you can volunteer at cityofkylevolunteer'applicablepool.com/jobs. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see any of the applications that are going for either one of these openings, if that's, okay? As soon as you receive them, I would like to read through them.
All right, next, we have our National Night Out, and Chief Barnett.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. National Night Out is tomorrow night. We would love to welcome each of you to come join us if you get a chance within your schedule. We will begin at 5:30 at the police department in the briefing room. We will go out and visit somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 city block parties in our community. And we will probably end up around 8:30 at our downtown location, which will be across the street here at the VFW facilities. For those neighborhoods whose community decided this year not to have a block party due to COVID, the party downtown, the one at the VFW, would be the one that we would encourage you to attend. But all are welcome. This is a National Night Out event, is a get-to-know-your-neighbors event where we, as city officials, get to go and be their guests while they get to meet one another, and all in order to prevent crime. Thank you.
Okay, and then next, we have Sandra Durin, Team Kyle News.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I would like to remind you that Columbus Day is next Monday, it's the second Monday of October, and we will be closed in observance of Columbus Day. And I would like to also welcome new team members that joined us. We have Orvi Dalal, Marketing Intern, Billy Gilkey, Street Construction Foreman, Jonathan Hernandez, Street Tech One. And we have two promotions, Dahlia Martinez from Municipal Court now is a lead. So congratulations to her. And Robert Marchand promoted to Street Tech Two from Street Tech One. So congratulate them on your season. Thank you.
Are any of them here tonight? Are any of them here tonight?
No, they're not.
No.
They have to come in early in the morning.
No, I got you, no. No, I appreciate, well, I'll just say this real quick, I appreciate when we do this. Anytime people are brought to Team Kyle, I think it's kind of cool that we acknowledge them in front of the council, even if they can't be here, even what we just did. I think that's really awesome, because we are all one big unit, and we love adding to the family, so thank you.
Yes, we are, thank you.
And that concludes my report. Thank you, Council.
Okay, I have a question. So it's not in the report, but it was in the Department Head meeting, and it looks like there was a trip to Washington last week, and I was wondering, besides you, were there any other council members that went? And if so, who were they?
Yeah, Councilmember Kel, I was on that trip.
Anybody else?
It's not on the, it's not listed on the City Manager's report, so I'm not quite sure what you're trying to accomplish here.
I'm trying to figure out, I mean, I previously requested via an email if I could get that information, and no one gave it to me, so I'm asking for it right now. Is there a different time that I could ask for it? And, and another question would be, why am I asking for it? And why isn't this, I thought we had collectively discussed on dais that we would choose who would went, and so I was, I was just curious. I learned this by reading a manager's, by reading the department head report.
If I may, since with, with the posting the way it is, my recommendation is one of two things, one, either an agenda item be posted for this item, or the City Manager provide that information to you by email.
Can I ask why? What is the legal standing for that?
Well, it depends on how much you're going to talk about the item, because it's not.
No, 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 that was it. I wanted, so.
You're discussing a topic and an item that is not on the agenda.
Well, it is during the City Manager's report, and it's, so I figured since he went, I could ask.
That's not the way that works.
Okay, so how does it work?
The specific items that he's going to discuss are listed under the City Manager's report.
Okay, so if I don't know that, that they went, how do I make sure that's on the agenda?
You would request either a policy that addresses that, that council adopts, or if you're trying to request information that you don't know it exists.
Paige, I'm sorry.
This was from today's meeting.
I'm sorry, her question is not appropriate for you to answer at this point, so.
So yeah, it was just as simple, who went, and that was it.
Councilmember Floris Kell, you're out of line. You're out of order. It's not appropriately listed on the agenda.
Thank you. I wish it was.
All right, next up, presentation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, May Oral Proclamation. This is one that we do every year in recognition in the month of October. So whereas the crime of domestic violence violates the basic human rights of safety and dignity, and 185 Texans lost their lives due to domestic violence, and whereas the problems of domestic violence and teen dating violence are not confined to any group of people, but cut across all economic, racial, gender, and societal barriers, and whereas the impact of domestic violence and teen dating violence directly affects individuals and communities when society ignores or tolerates violence in relationships, and whereas last year, Hayes Caldwell Women's Center provided face-to-face services to over 836 local victims of domestic violence and provided 5,105 days of shelter. And whereas last year, Hayes Caldwell Women's Center provided these direct services to 123 victims from the City of Kyle, and now therefore, I Travis Mitchell, on behalf of the City Council, and do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and call upon the people of Kyle to work together with the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center and local partners to bring an end to domestic violence and teen dating violence. We do have a representative here, is there anything you would like to say?
Just briefly, thank you for reading the proclamation and recognizing this important month. I also, I believe last time I was here, I invited you, but if I didn't, I'm going to extend it again. I would like to host you at any time, come take a tour of our campus. We are a few months away from completing a very exciting new project, providing transitional housing services for victims of domestic violence, specifically parents of young children, where we're trying to interrupt the cycle of violence by providing a more comprehensive service. So we're very close to completing that project, but we're doing tours already, so if anyone is interested in seeing what that's going to look like, it's the first in our area, and we're really excited that we get to provide that for our community. So thank you so much for sponsoring this proclamation, and I'd love to hear from you all if you're interested in coming out.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments?
I'd like to take a tour, if possible, if I could get some information.
I, I just want to thank you for the service you all provide for our residents.
Thank you.
You know, gotten to help work with you all in the past in relocating families, so I appreciate the opportunity, and it actually opened my eyes to some things, so just want to thank you for all you all do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, do you have like an email address, or?
I do, in fact, I was just going to say, I believe your email addresses are on the website, right?
Yes.
I'll have my assistant email you directly.
Thank you.
We'll set that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm interested as well.
Perfect, we will reach out to you all. Thanks.
All right, next up, we're going to go with CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Leon Barbas, City Engineer. Mayor, you, last time you asked about the outstanding items on the Burleson Street project, so I thought I'd go ahead and list them for you and the council. We still have two change orders that we're trying to wrap up with this predictor contractor. Again, I mentioned that parking space that we're still not finding compliant, and we're trying to get a credit on that. They have offered, but we didn't agree with their number. And last but not least, we do need the asylums for the project. So those are the three main things that we're looking for from this contractor. As I mentioned before, we're sitting on over $300,000 worth of retainage, so the incentive's there for him to wrap it up. There's a couple of other items that popped up on the project, but those are not part of the contract, and we asked for some quotes from the contractor, but they were, they were kind of high, so we're going to have to do them differently and handle those projects, and handle those two other items. Heroes Memorial Park, we're about 17% complete. The weather's really kind of delayed some of our projects lately. Conditions are pretty bad out there with the rain that we had. They're still working on that rock cascade wall, and they're still forming the flagpole step seating. And again, we're still having some issues with the rain trying to get dry, everything dried up. Levator Park's kind of running into the same situation. Rain's kind of slowing this down, but it's about 10% complete. They're still worked on grading and installing utilities. Mary Cal Hartson Park Project, I'm glad James is here to answer any extra questions, but we're about 30% complete, and we're pouring some concrete there around the curbs and trails in the northern section. Pavers are being laid in the promenade. Playground's about 65% installed. The underground conduits on the north portion are complete, and we have the northern sidewalk and bike rack concrete placed, flagpoles are installed, you can barely see them in the picture, but they are there. Excavation of playground area, irrigation, main line, trenching is in progress. Wendy Hill Street and Drainage Project, we're pretty close to being wrapped up on this project. There's two items on the consent agenda I wanted to bring up to your attention. One of them is the number 11. That's for an amount of about $6,000 for some additional material testing that we need on that project to wrap it up. And on the other item, number 19, that's for some additional material that we need placed out there, because it was, with that rain, that we had, we had a little bit of erosion problems, so we decided we need to put some more netting out there to keep that erosion from continuing on the project. We're about 98% complete, and of course, if they are driving on that new roadway. Change Order Five, we did not have to go over that 5% that we set for that project, but with this additional work that we did have to do, we, that's why we ended up with another change order that pushes us over that 5% contingency that we allow. And there's the project right now, today. Southside Wastewater Improvements, the, for about 90% complete. One of the things that we have not added on this particular project is a change order we're going to need for the Edwards Business Park wastewater line. That's roughly about $200,000. That's going to push us over the 5% that we allotted for that contract. So when we add that particular change order, that's going to drop us below the percent complete. But as you can see, we're mobilizing to, right in front of the Murray property, that's going to be the toughest part of the job that we have in that whole project. And then we're going to continue up in an easterly direction to install that Edwards Drive wastewater line. Wastewater Treatment Plant, we're about 76% complete. We're three quarters of the way through, we have six months left in the project. The weather, again, has messed this up, so we're working on Saturdays to keep that project on schedule. They're still working on the major project, parts of the project there. We're still planning to complete this project March of 2022, that date is still set. And the dewatering facility that we did authorize recently, that's going to be completed in August of 2022. Button Creek Interceptor, not seeing a lot of activity on this particular project. You can see the pit that's been dug there for the bore. The contractor's having problems with their subcontractor right now, trying to get them to work to the job, so he's going to start looking for a different subcontractor. The other problem that we had, as you recall, is the pipe. We still have not heard word from the suppliers on when we're going to get that pipe, so we're checking on a routine basis, trying to find out how soon we can get that pipe. Last I heard, one of the plants went down, they weren't making residents anymore, so we can't seem to win on this particular project. Old Post Road, on this particular project, do want to let you know that I met with Mr. Davin Alexander last Wednesday to talk about the roadway change that we need to make out there. He wasn't very comfortable with what he was looking at, so I'd sent him the maps and everything, and the request that we had made to move those lines. And so what I told him we would do is we would go ahead and mark the new proposed line for him, so I've reached out to the surveyor, asked him to mark the new line that we are, or new roadway line that we need, and then that should be done this week. We're working on it to get it done this week, and I'm trying to try to get Mr. Alexander out there either later this week or early next week to look at it, so we can wrap this thing up and continue moving forward. The county did finish all their driveways, they did have a little work left to do there on some ditches, but they said we need to wait, and because we'd like to do that along with the intersection and get it all done at one time. So hopefully we'll have them start it back within a month. That's my goal. LA Branch Interceptor, as you know, we closed off Sledge recently. They're, they're about 32% complete, and the contractor's doing pretty well on this project. We're, we're going to be putting reclaimed water line, a water line, and a wastewater line underneath this particular culvert there on Sledge. And so they're moving along fairly quickly on this project. We expect to finish this project probably spring of 2022. There were two other consent agenda items I want to bring to your attention. One is the award to LJA Engineering. They will be working on a project between Marketplace and Avenue and Martinez Loop. What we want them to do is provide us a template for the improvements that we want to do on the, on the, both of, not only the southbound, but the northbound frontage roads. As we get these developers coming in and starting to develop property along the frontage roads, we'd like to see some nice curbing, some nice wide sidewalks or shared use paths, and lighting, everything that we would like to see on a good project, really nice looking project. So this will be our template that we're going to be coming up with, with this particular item. On the second item, this is the one that we're looking at, where they're going to have, look at putting sidewalks or probably shared use paths on FM 150 East, that will be starting at Lehman Road all the way to Highway 21. We're expecting to see some things, hopefully in about six months from the, this firm from LJ. Questions?
Councilmember Tobias.
Oh, real quickly, Leon, you may not have this information previously, Scott, but it's not on your, but the intersection of Dacey and BB, they're doing all that reconstruction right in there. Is there possibility that those, there's some streetlights going to be added soon? Or, because I saw some of those conduits, I guess those big old round things, I didn't know, because they took down those big poles, so I just didn't know if something's coming around the corner. I already have people asking, that's why.
By understanding, they are supposed to have a traffic signal there.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, Leon, first of all, I just want to thank you for working out with the Alexanders and getting that resolved. That looks like you're going above and beyond there, so thank you. My next question is, could you keep track of all the days that were delayed because of rain? I want to make sure we can give those to the contractor at the end of the projects. There's a lot of rain last week, it was kind of crazy, so I don't want to penalize them for that, but if we keep track of those days, and if there's a way, I'd appreciate it.
We typically do that, Councilmember.
Sounds good. Thank you, Leon.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Leon? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Item number 12 needs to be polled. Does anyone have a request to poll any items?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent. Agenda items nine through 21, excluding 12.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approved the consent agenda excluding item number 12. Is there any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 12, approve a resolution of City of Kyle, Texas approving and authorizing a financing agreement for the Kyle 57 Public Improvement District. Ms. Sands.
Mayor, Council, Paige Sands, City Attorney, for the record. I wanted to make you aware that we had some suggested language to add to this agreement, suggested by Bond Counsel, just to clarify that the PID bond funds are not being used for undergrounding the utilities. That language has been sent to you by email, but it's, it's to add for the avoidance of doubt, the city and the owner hereby agree that PID bond proceeds shall be used only for the authorized improvements, and also agree that no portion of those PID bond proceeds will be used for undergrounding work. So if you move to approve without language, that would be appropriate, and that would be added to the final document to be signed. One more thing to draw to your attention, you approved the waiver of the value-to-lean ratio in the PID policy. The information presented to you proposed estimated a 2.3 to 1 value-to-lean ratio, and that has, that is now a 2 to 1 value-to-lean ratio to accommodate providing more funding towards the undergrounding, and to provide for funding for installation of 12-foot-wide trails.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Sands? I'd like to make a motion to approve, and to add the language as outlined by the City Attorney just now.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, public hearings, public hearing regarding a proposed comprehensive plan amendment to add warehouse and construction, manufacturing, zoning districts to the regional node land use district and the comprehensive plan in the City of Kyle, Texas. Mr. Atkinson. And this is as a conditional use, right?
Yes. All right, before you, we have a comprehensive plan amendment. This is something that Steph has been considering for several months now, and it was an item that also relatively recently a developer had also asked to bring forward. So it was kind of a, actually a concurrent kind of idea between us. The idea is to include sometimes warehouse and construction, manufacturing, zoning districts along the I-35 corridor in the regional nodes. Sometimes it's appropriate, sometimes it's not. And we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to pursue those opportunities when a developer comes in and the City Council finds it appropriate to do so, but also not hamstring ourselves to not allow it. So it's as simple as that. We've all looked at maps along I-35, we all have our own ideas of where it's appropriate and where it's not, but this could give you an opportunity to be able to discuss that. Do you all have any questions for me?
It's not listed for action, so this is just a public hearing.
Correct.
Does anybody have any questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It is now closed. Assume this item will come back now for a possible vote at the next meeting. Okay. All right, next up, agenda item number 23, discussion of possible action on implementing a process to create a Human Services Board Commission to review, advise, and create an equitable and fair process for allocating grant funding to nonprofit organizations serving the Kyle area. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you. So in the past, we've had nonprofits approach to city. I've been on council since November 2017. I've certainly seen my fair share of them wholly committed, came to us a while back. You might remember that, Mayor. I think that was before any other folks were on at that time. And we've had others kind of approach in different things. I remember in one budget workshop, it was the last one of the season, I believe this was in 2019, and there was a request made in the last workshop to allocate funding to a to a specific nonprofit that had reached out to a council member. And it was a nonprofit that I quite enjoy and does great work in our city, and I've volunteered my time and money with that, that nonprofit. But for, for me, and certainly was the seeming to be the sentiment of the council at the time, was that rather than individual council members being vied for their support for a nonprofit, there would need to be an equitable plan and policy put forward so that any and all nonprofits could either have that opportunity, or what I'll be making tonight is another option that the city could choose to go down as well. So that's a little bit background on that, and certainly I know, as my colleagues have come onto the council, they've seen a variety of this. So in the other information on the backup material on the agenda item, I placed three different websites, one from the City of San Marcos, one from the City of Buta, and one from the City of Austin. So both the City of San Marcos and the City of Buta, they both do a human services grant application that is just wide open, that any nonprofit can apply for, regardless of what their nonprofit does. They can apply. And the cities have created a commission of residents that review those applications and then make a recommendation to the council on where that grant funding should go. So that's how they do it. The other way I've seen it done, and Austin was the closest local example of this, is that rather than open free-for-all of anybody, whether it's food services, shelter services, education services, but I mean, with a nonprofit, that could be, you know, a sports organization or any umpteen number of different things. I'm sure you all have had experience with nonprofits and what those could be. So the City of Austin does it a little differently, and there are other cities as well that do it this way, where they are council and city-initiated ideas. So essentially, the leadership decides on an area that they feel like that they want to be supportive of and, and help fill a hole, but they, the city doesn't have the resources, the department, the person power, you name it, to do that. So one of the things they do is they do set aside grant funding, but it's very specific to what they're trying to get accomplished, whether that's housing, or, you know, any other umpteen different things that the council might decide is of importance to them for that particular year. And so that's how that's done. And so they allocate the funding, but they have a very specific grant application. And then all nonprofits that could meet those services and provide those services then apply for that grant funding in order to meet that, that very specific desire and need by the, by the leadership. So certainly, open any questions of myself. I don't claim to be an expert in any of this. That's why I wanted to provide you all the similar things that I reviewed as well. We've all had experience with nonprofits, I'm sure, is our various different leadership throughout the community and how that works. I certainly have a preference between these two options, but my idea was rather than to come to you all with a set policy and, you know, how this all should be done, that we look at a way of, some of the way we've used our task force, but with a very hard deadline, I'd say maybe two months, for a group, a small group of us to review these options, and then come with the pros and cons, and a recommendation maybe even to the city council after reviewing that. So I don't think I have much more to add to than that, but certainly there's a precedent for doing these human services grants all throughout Texas, and certainly in our corridor. It's just more than one way to do it as well. And I just wanted to make the council aware of that, that there are options on how to go about doing it.
Thank you, council member. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. I do have a question, either for Paige or Scott. It looks like in the comprehensive plan, there's 10 elements. The 10th element is a health and human services element, and I'm just curious if this, if what Dex brings to the table would qualify for that.
Are you referring to the city charter, health and human service element, or the adopted city?
Yeah, under the city charter, section 10.02, comprehensive plan, second paragraph, number 10. It's one, two, three, four sentences up from the bottom.
That's within council's discretion to determine. It's a, it's a broad statement. The charter's broad because the council has to get into the details of what, what it determines is appropriate to implement, what the city charter wants. So it's within council's discretion to find that to be consistent.
Okay, so as a council, we need to decide if a health and human services element is the same as a process to create a human services board slash commission, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Not necessarily. You can determine that it's part of the comprehensive plan. I don't know, I don't know if your current comprehensive plan addresses that or not. If your current comprehensive plan that's adopted by the city does not address that, it doesn't prevent the city council from carrying out what council member Ellison proposes, independent of that.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm actually looking at the charter website. And so my curiosity was just, did this qualify, if you thought it would qualify for this? So it would be another way that we could, you know, update the comprehensive plan.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Bratchell.
Yes, I had a question for Councilmember Ellison. You, you mentioned the second option, offering the grant funding, and I just need some clarification. Were you, are those federal grants that the city receives and then we disperse? Or were those grants that we would essentially create and allocate?
Any other questions? Do you have anything else to add?
No, I certainly can make a motion, but I just wanted to see if the council had a desire to do something of this nature. And like I said, I think it certainly does deserve a little more heads than just one to put together and figure out. Because anytime you create a new policy, I mean, we've tried to create boards and commissions, we've tried to create policies, they're difficult to put together, but it also, not only just the difficulty of them, but the immense pressure of that it sets precedent. And once you do it one way, then it's, you know, that's, that's how people are going to view it. Certainly you can make changes in different things, but once you put it on paper and it's adopted, certainly it opens up for all kinds of scrutiny and everything that you probably missed in creating that policy. But, no, I mean, I don't have much more to add. I hope you all kind of reviewed the, the websites to see how those applications kind of work. But yeah, this would be city funds, and that's the case with all three examples that are on there. They're all city funds from their budget that they assign those grant funding to.
Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. I think it's an excellent idea. Some people on the dais might be okay piggybacking off of the giving of other charities and organizations, but I find it disturbing that the City of Kyle has not made an effort to give back to certain kind of organizations that directly benefit our residents. As they spoke about today, we had 261 kids that needed assistance. That, that was the highest number for that organizations, and it's, it's affecting our most vulnerable residents. And so to not give back seems a little bit of irresponsible and arrogant to just assume that other people are going to take care of our residents. I'm really glad that council member Ellison brought this up, and I think it's long overdue.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, you brought up a good point, Cale, that I don't see, see what the women's shelter is like. I don't see them as a charity. I see them as a resource that we use, so putting them in the same category as other charities, I think, is misrepresenting who they are. They're a resource. They do, they provide a vital resource for our community, and that's why in my first year on council, I was, right after I was elected, we started our funding for the year. And I, I voted to try to get something in for them. Unfortunately, it didn't go anywhere. But I, I see them a little different than charity, because I'm a part of a nonprofit right now, and we do a lot of fundraising. We bring in a lot of our own funds, even during, you know, it could be an argument saying that, you know, we help a lot of citizens in Kyle, but we do a lot of our own fundraising. And the reason I'm bringing that up is, I did get some feedback from some of the residents saying that, you know, city tax money should be going towards, you know, roads and, and infrastructure. And I, I kind of weighed on that, you know, information that I got from them, and, you know, I'm, I'm a person that believes in charity, but I think it should be happening on an individual basis where individuals want to give to charity. I know I definitely give a lot to charity, so personally, but I, I think when you're looking at tax dollars and giving away, not giving away, but maybe, you know, giving out grants, it's still tax dollars. I'd get a lot more input from the citizens instead of just the seven people on this board, so that might be something we need to do, is start reaching out to the public and going down that process.
Yeah, I think that's what this is.
Hang on, I'm sorry, Councilmember Floris Cale, you don't have a floor.
Sorry.
Councilmember Bratchell. No, actually, Councilmember Tobias.
Did you want to go first?
No, you go first, thank you.
All right. Okay, this has been brought up before, and I understand that there is the need for helping nonprofits in the city, we have, or in, in areas. There's, there's two points, there's, there's two things on this here. Yes, there is the need for helping those that need our assistance. We've been involved with the Central Texas Food Bank ourselves, we've given our time and our energy. Councilman Rizzo and I are also involved with a local nonprofit that we assist with our time and our energy with as well. But it also goes back to which one in our city would we need to allocate if we go this route? What would be the procedure? Who would get the funding? Where would we get the funding? Because you start running into that as well. We have to be responsible as well for the taxpayer money, and you're going to be having people saying, well, this nonprofit's more important than this one over here. You know, my nonprofit that I, is, that I go towards benefits more in this area. So I, I think what we're trying to do is, we, we understand the importance that, you know, having nonprofits and assisting them is important in our city, but I think we're just trying to figure out a way to see if, how we can implement some kind of program or policy. And maybe a suggestion would be not so much having council, but getting, I know maybe some people don't, aren't fans of this, but a HACCAU committee to help us with the policy or developing something like that, to streamline it. And then also, maybe when it comes to funding, there's a certain parameter or a certain amount that we, if we do this, we start off, I wouldn't say very low, but just try to get that, a policy going to see what our, what our mission statement would be if we were to go this route.
Councilmember Bratchell. Well, she's spoken twice, you've spoken once. Oh, I'm sorry.
Not necessarily response, no.
Councilmember Bratchell.
Yeah, I too want to thank you for bringing this forward. I think you and I have had conversations about how important contributing back to the community is, and we both love to volunteer our time and our money and our resources within Kyle. But to piggyback off of what council member Tobias said, it is hard to justify creating, well, there's, there's actually two parts to this. It's hard for me to justify creating a commission for something like this when we are in a place with our city growing the way that it is, where we're struggling to fund the roads that we need and to fund the positions that we need for our staff. And then also, it seems like we're kind of at a gridlock with the policies and procedures for the boards and the commissions that we have now. And so just to touch on what you said, I think I have some concerns as far as kind of how that would look and what that would be like for us creating this sort of commission.
Councilwoman Ellison.
Certainly. And I think I'm going to take a step back here. My goal was not to, because all, all these questions and these comments are exactly what needs to be worked out, and that's why I said it, these things are very weighty. We typically cannot figure those out in an agenda item, and that's why I'm proposing that we have a small task force of the council to work with staff, include anybody they want to, to come up with parameters for what a policy would look like, how to create a board or commission. Because I do agree with the statements that were made. The recommendation should come from, similar to how they do it in all these three cities as well, there is a committee of residents that are made up, and they are the ones that review the applications and filter through everything, do interviews and all that stuff, and then make a recommendation to council. The other thing about this too, and I brought up a two-month task force, is that none of this is, you know, if, if we decided to create a commission, none of this would happen until we go through the budget workshop, we, we come up with an allocation of funding, and then it goes into effect October 1st, 2022. So nothing's going to happen until those things occur. So we have a few months between now and our first budget workshop of next year to figure out if, if we did want to go down this path. I think there's two questions of the council. Do we want to go down a path, and I heard what you said, Councilmember Rizzo, so I think I know where you are on this, but do we want to go down a path of using taxpayer funds to allocate to nonprofit organizations? And I use nonprofit organizations specifically and not charities for a reason. Do we want to go down that path? Yes or no? If we don't, then I guess nothing more to discuss. If we do, then I think that there are a number of different ways to accomplish this. But once again, it's not going to be figured out right here in this agenda item. And I, I hear all, everything that you all have said are things that I've thought about already as well in putting this agenda item out there. There's umpteen different questions, there's so many different things to figure out. That's why it's going to take, you know, two or three of us getting to the side, working through all the possible questions, reviewing the video of what was said tonight and what the council members said, what their concerns were, and figuring out a process to alleviate all of those concerns. That would be, in my mind, the most effective way. If we did have the answer to the first question being yes, then that would be the way to go about doing it. Because once again, none of this, even a dollar amount is not going to even be decided until next budget work sessions. You know, we could talk about this in visionary retreat and all this different type of stuff, but no dollar amount is going to be set until we have those budget discussions. Creating a ad hoc or task force in order to come up with a policy and a plan to, once the council does decide on X amount of dollars to allocate to nonprofits, then, you know, we have the policy and an idea of how those things, that machine will work before we even get to that dollar amount, which I know everybody wants to know what that dollar amount is. But actually, that would probably be in my line of thinking, the last thing that kind of comes out of this, once we've done all the work of putting together how this machine will work, of figuring out the most equitable way to allocate grant funding for human services in our city, once again, if the answer to the first question is yes.
Okay, I have a few thoughts. I appreciate your final comments there, because I do think that's, that the core of the, the question is whether or not we want to decide as a policy, as a council, that we do want to shell out, or take some portion of our budget and give it to nonprofits, either through this council or through the creation of a commission and to empower them to do it. I think this is probably about the third time this conversation's come up since I've been on this dais. It is, it is ironic that you brought the Buta up in particular, because Buta was one of the reasons and that we decided not to do this a few years ago, because the folks had said they created a monster that created that thing. And they said that there's a lot of fighting over resources and dollars, a lot of hurt feelings, and at the end of the day, it just became... And at the end of the day, it just became just very political. And maybe it's gotten a lot better since then, I don't know. I don't, I don't pay too much attention to it. But anytime the council or the city institutes a grant process, whether it's to nonprofits or to small businesses or facades, you know, there are always facade upgrades, there are always going to be winners and losers that get chosen out of that. And the comment was made that it would be arrogant of us not to, to participate in that. There are those in the past and, you know, who, you know, who would say that it, it might be arrogant of us to think that we can do better with citizens' money than they can do with their own money as it relates to giving money, giving taxpayer dollars to nonprofits. And for me, that's always been where I've stood. You know, my, my position has always been that it's not the city council's responsibility to tax people and then take those resources and then give them to nonprofit groups at our discretion. Whether we create a committee and, and task them to do that as a way of sort of de-politicizing it or, or not, at the end of the day, the resources that get allocated come from the council. They are not our dollars. They belong to the residents. And, you know, I, I think there are, you know, many, many more nonprofit organizations that will come forward if we were to put a dollar to it. So my final thought would be, you know, as I've thought about it, it's always been exactly the opposite of what you just said though, and that is that we should start with the money, decide whether or not we want to allocate some money out of the budget towards this. And then once we've decided whether or not to allocate some money, then we start putting processes around money. Because we go through and spend the next six months or two months trying to come up with a policy that's obviously going to be controversial and then go all the way through the budget, you know, are we going to take a, you know, how do we know that that money is even going to be there, what the political tolerance is for different amounts? Is this 10,000 or is this 100,000? Are we looking for one or two nonprofits? Or are we looking for 10 or 20 nonprofits? So I, I would think that that would be something we would want to start out with, not wait till the end. I think waiting till the end is to decide the money and whether we're actually going to fund this thing. I certainly wouldn't want to create a board or commission and then not fund it. So we have to have a commitment to fund it. And then we're going to have to also be willing to take the responsibility of deciding which nonprofit is best and most deserving of the taxpayers' dollars. And there are seven of us, and if we create another commission, that's another seven. So the 10, 15 possible opinions. For myself, I just don't think it's our responsibility to do that. So anyway, that's why, you know, wasn't brought up before. That's my thoughts.
Yeah, I, I would just say totally fair and legitimate points. I guess I, I have to admit, I do see it differently. I'm more inclined to next budget work session, maybe not even getting the committee or the board together, but the policy and the ideas of how we want to go about doing this. Something substantive would be more, make me more inclined to next budget cycle, you know, direct staff to, you know, find whatever that dollar amount is. So just kind of having a plan in place, I guess, before the dollar amount. Because I guess if, the way I see it is it would work negatively if we created a dollar amount, whatever that is, and then it automatically draws all this interest. Because I agree with you on that. Once you put that dollar amount out there, then it's, it's going to be a lot of interest on it. But I think if you don't have a policy and some kind of standard bearer in place, even bef, like I said, I think even the committee, the point in the committee could wait till, you know, next summer when we're doing the budget. But as far as the policy and the overall way of going about it, I think that would be helpful to have in place. So people know what the expectations are and that there is some kind of plan in place before we start allocating funding. Because I guess that's, just being inconsistent the way I've done in the past four budget work cycles, I like to understand what the goal is of funding and the dollar amounts that we appoint before I appoint a dollar amount and then figure out all the, the details after it. But like I said, all legitimate things, everything that you all have said tonight is certainly worth discussing and legitimate concerns or, or thoughts. But like I said, I think that's why it needs to be figured out outside of this agenda item and then brought back with a number of different ideas. But certainly, just wanted to put it out there for the council.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward though. The discussion does need to be had. You know, being a part of a couple of nonprofits myself, I've had a lot of experience with this and we've reached out for funding as well and sometimes are a little disappointed, actually a lot disappointed when we don't get that funding. Unfortunately, there's, it needs out there that have people that can go through the process that are seasoned, that will, a process like this would probably exclude somebody depending how we put it together. But I, I just feel like sometimes when you put something like this together, no matter what, somebody's going to feel bad. I know there's been a couple of occasions where we've tried to get some federal resources and, and the dollars are out there. And when you see the people that are getting it, you're like, was that really a nonprofit? But they've got the staff there that knows how to navigate through those applications. So that's kind of been disheartening as well. I guess that's why I'm kind of torn on this. If we do create something like this and we put something together, it's going to be the same characters that have those resources to put great, you know, applications together to all do the other ones that actually work in the community. So, but it's a discussion we need to have. Where we're going with this, I don't know. I just, I do have some concerns, so.
Any other comments? If there's nothing else, I'm going to move on.
I think we should probably, as a council, maybe answer that first question at least. Do we have a desire to allocate funding out of our budget each year? Not putting a dollar amount to it, not putting a policy to it, but do we have a desire to do that? Once again, like I said, if the answer's no from council, then discussion's done at least with this body, right? Because if we don't have a desire to even do that, then, you know, it's, it's going to settle until the council changes and there are other people that have a different way of thinking about it. So I think at the very least on, on this agenda item, and certainly since it's been postponed so many different times, I think we owe it to the public to let them know how we feel about doing that or not.
So the question is, do we have a desire to allocate resources out of our budget in a future budget to go towards nonprofits?
Yeah, human, human services grants are nonprofits. I think that's the fundamental question, right?
That's the fundamental question. Yep. Does anybody want to speak on that? Councilor Floris Cale.
I do, and without a doubt, I think what Mr. Ellison is trying to do is right on target. He's trying to create a process. And in that process, we don't have to at the end say, yes, this is what we want to do. But he's trying to have a process to show us what it could look like and with no price tag. I'll tell you right now, there was a resident that I had to help get her water reconnected and the church had, I found a church to donate $300. And she was super appreciative. So we're not talking 10, 30, $50,000, but something like $300 helps. And so I don't think it's the end of the world. I really truly don't believe our residents are going to be terribly upset if we decide to make a commission or a committee that want to sit and figure out ways that we can give back to the community. I think that's making an assumption. Again, if during this process, we find that residents do feel that way, then we don't proceed. But to not proceed at all, I think is kind of a shortcoming. Like, we could be missing out on a really great idea where we could help our residents and, you know, whether it be for daycare or water or food or whatever that looks like, I don't foresee a lot of taxpayers getting upset because we are helping other residents. Again, we can figure that out during the process.
The, the experience that I've had, so it's not that we haven't pursued it, but the experience that I've had has been that the, it's not the residents who get upset, it's the representatives of the nonprofit. So for example, the request that you brought forward a few months ago, the request was $100,000. That's one nonprofit in the city of Kyle. So it's just, and that's, the, the point I'm making is the, that in, in past, when these grants and these, you know, the, the, the resources are limited and the amount of different nonprofits who might want to make a case for that is not nearly as limited. And there is a lot of lobbying, there is a lot of pursuing getting those dollars. And, you know, at, at the end of the day, it's just not a situation where a lot of folks have been happy. So that's my opinion. We can, see if anybody else wants to say anything. The question on the table is, do we want to fund in next year's budget some amount without saying so that we have at least enough direction to know that there is a desire to move this thing forward?
So should we put that in the form of a motion and a vote? I'd like to make a motion to, let me see how to word this without all the different things that I had in mind. Generally, so let me look at, I'm going to look to you, Paige and Scott. Generally, I want to make a motion to see if the council has that temperament to direct staff at a future time to create a policy for allocating funding from the budget to nonprofit organizations and via human services grant. So what would be the best way to go about doing that? Without allocating a dollar amount, without creating a board or commission, without creating some kind of policy as well?
I think, so you're wanting, it would be, I'm trying to grasp, give my answer on your, your motion.
More of a poll. He's trying to poll the council to see if we want to spend money on this.
Yeah, I think it's a, a motion to authorize staff to, yeah, to create a policy around funding of nonprofits. Would that be?
Yeah, I don't even, I don't even know if that, because I feel like that's even going beyond what I guess the general question is or the basic fundamental question of, do we want to even go down the road of allocating taxpayer funding from our budget, our revenues from our budget to go towards our?
Maybe a motion to consider it a future date, an action item to allocate funding from a future budget.
That would work.
There we go.
For nonprofits.
So moved if that's on the record, so I don't have to repeat that.
Second, a motion made by Councilor Ellison, seconded by the mayor to direct staff to bring back a future agenda item with recommending a budget, budgeted amount for this particular item. Is there a discussion on that motion? So an up, a, a yes vote says, yes, we want to have resources committed to this and a no vote is, no, we do not.
That's probably about as clear and effective as it's going to get.
Any, any other discussion? Roll call vote.
First, no. Yes.
Just one last piece of discussion, just.
We're in the middle of roll call vote, we can't discuss.
You can't discuss.
All right, sounds good.
Sorry.
All right, no.
Ellison?
Hi.
Tobias?
Nay.
Nay.
Bretschel?
Nay.
All right, motion fails five to two. All right, next up, agenda item number 24, evaluation of expectations from city council and city manager when presenting direction of council to staff. Councilor Floris Cale.
Thank you very much. I would like to give a little background information to my agenda item by stating that my original request for this discussion was to city manager Scott Sellers, who inquired, required a written request detailing what I'd like to be talking about before meeting with me. He referenced a possible meeting with me as being verbally assaulted, which is kind of odd considering that was a topic I planned on having with him regarding others on council. After being denied a face-to-face meeting and a request for a special meeting from both mayor Travis Mitchell and city manager Scott Sellers, I then requested this item to be placed on a regular session agenda, which they attempted to put on the executive session. After clarifying that my issues were not personnel issues but direction from council issues, my item was finally placed on the agenda six weeks ago. Before our last meeting, I presented my backup material to city secretary. My backup material consisted of email conversations between myself and Scott Sellers, myself and Travis Mitchell, and myself and city attorney Paige Sines. Ms. Sines, the city attorney, immediately suggested the emails I provided not be included as backup material since there was a reference to what she considered legal advice. I redacted the legal advice and resent the emails as backup material. However, I was then told because the legal counsel had been CC'd on some of the emails, it should not be included. Needless to say, I was not able to submit my backup materials as I had hoped. Getting to the point of my agenda item, on August 25th, I received an email from, from the city with an attachment regarding the resignation of the director of planning, Howard Koontz. Upon receiving the email, I reached out directly to Mr. Koontz to find out his reason for ending his employment with the city. And he proceeded to describe a meeting with the city. Mr. Koontz was sincere and straightforward regarding his frustrations with the city and proceeded to describe a meeting he had with mayor Travis Mitchell and mayor Pro Temrick Coach, which ultimately led him to seek new employment. Mr. Koontz shared with me that on January 15th, 2021, mayor Travis Mitchell requested a meeting with him in the glass meeting room upstairs of city hall. When Mr. Koontz arrived, mayor Pro Temrick Coach was also present. During the meeting, Mr. Koontz was accused of telling the planning and zoning committee how to vote and what to say. He was told that the entire city council hated him, nobody respected him, and all would be happier if he were gone. Mayor Travis Mitchell wrapped up his 25-minute meeting with Mr. Koontz by telling him that if he didn't start making some changes, that mayor Travis Mitchell would. After his meeting, Mr. Koontz went to city manager Scott Sellers to voice his concerns regarding the direction he received from mayor Travis Mitchell and mayor Pro Temrick Coach and asked for help, to which Mr. Sellers took no action. No city staff should ever receive such direction from a council member nor collectively as a council. There are better ways. Let me reiterate, this item is six weeks old. Six weeks ago, Mr. Koontz was still an employee of the city of Kyle and planned on sharing his story firsthand. Unfortunately, Mr. Koontz has found new employment. This was Mr. Koontz's story to tell. I have no doubt that many other employees could share but choose not to for fear of retaliation, including termination. I say this because after my email to city manager Scott Sellers, the following Monday during the manager's meeting, staff was reprimanded for two hours, which consisted of being told that the city would find out who the mole, who the mole was, a term I find derogatory considering the circumstances. What happened to Mr. Koontz and I am sure what happens to other city staff is shameful and it is my belief that our residents have a right to know what is going on with city council members. Take it upon themselves to give staff direction. I have no doubt people will question my motives or question why I choose to discuss a situation that happened nine months ago. I want to make it clear that I was apprised of this situation six weeks ago. My integrity is very important to me and to keep mine intact, I could not allow Mr. Koontz's story to go unheard. I ask if this issue was not raised by me, then by who? This agenda item has been a struggle for me. This topic is not fun nor comfortable for me or anyone else to discuss. I no doubt will be ostracized not for something I did but for enlightening the, the public about the actions of my fellow council members. My sole intention is to create awareness. This year, we've lost three P&amp;Z commissioners and a director of planning. I want to make sure this type of behavior isn't a problem and does not occur again. As a council member who relies heavily on the charter and its regulation of the city, it is my expectation that council does not direct staff. And since council does not direct staff, council does not need to be included in any staff evaluation unless previously discussed on dais or an executive session. The city manager does not give direction of staff regarding information that has not been discussed or voted on during council meeting or an executive session. More specifically, city managers should not be relaying individual council members' opinions. It is my hope that by bringing this issue to light, that we can collectively move on on the dais with newfound expectations, which align directly with our city's charter. I am open for questions.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilor Tobias.
Yes. Just off the bat, this will be for Mr. Sellers. During any evaluations of employees, council members. council members are not aware of their final EDFs, we call them Employment Development File, per the charter. So any kind of conversations or let's say yearly evaluations, it just stays within the city with the, you know, council or nobody else gets any of those copies?
City Manager Scott Sellers for the record, that is not our practice to extend staff evaluations to council nor to solicit council input for those evaluations. Per charter, that is solely done from the city manager and staff supervision.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sellers, did you follow that rule as it relates to the item that Councilor Floris Kell is alleging?
I did.
Does anybody else have any questions? Councilor Floris Kell.
Actually, Councilor Ellison, I think you had your hands up a second ago. Councilor Ellison.
So I have a couple of questions. One of Councilmember Floris Kell. So in your this consider impossible action item, what were you hoping? What was your objective with with this item? You've clearly have made a number of comments and certainly some statements of some things that happened in the past. I'll go ahead and say some disturbing things that you you've made comments about. What were you hoping to accomplish with this agenda item and bringing this up to the body this evening?
Well, I did not ask for it to be under consider impossible action. I have no idea why it was put under that. I thought it was going to be a discussion. But apparently two weeks ago, they put it on under this and and I'm not sure why. I can ask Mr. Sellers why he placed it under consideration or consider impossible action.
Is that a question you want me to answer? That was a vote from the council to place it on the agenda at the top of consider impossible action for this agenda.
Oh, it was but it was originally it was on here as consider impossible action and that was not on a vote two, three, three weeks ago. That was done on by whoever created the agenda.
It has been the practice of this council pretty much for as long as I recall for council originated action items to be placed at the end of the agenda.
But if I wasn't asking for any action, I guess my question is why it went under that?
Where it went on the agenda?
Okay, so to answer Mr. Ellison's question, it started to become more and more apparent that we were losing, you know, P and Z members at the beginning of the year. And then what really did it was seeing Mr. Koontz leave. And me and Mr. Koontz, let's be clear, we did not always see eye to eye. But my discouragement with him was always from the dais and always said in front of everybody else. And he himself was a little nervous because he felt like nobody would believe his story. And so when he agreed, I was really disappointed that we had actually that night at midnight, we decided to postpone the meeting. And so unfortunately, he wasn't able to tell his story himself, which I think is deserving of a situation. So, you know, I don't think this is something that that breaks a situation. And when I said that it was really my hope that it just brings issue brings light to this issue and then we can just move on, that is my ultimate hope for us to realize that as we sit up here as seven council members, we are no better or no we have no right to talk to staff, directors, residents in any way that we wouldn't want to be spoken to. And so ultimately, that is my hope and that is my goal, is that we can kind of turn this situation around and make it a learning lesson and then move forward.
Okay, and so, yeah, well, so that was, like I said, I was just trying to understand what you were what you were hoping to accomplish and what action that you were hoping to take by putting on there. But I see just the you had meant for it to be just a discussion and ended up on consider impossible action. So I get that. My second question is for those that Councilmember Floris Kell brought up in her statements, how, I mean, how much of that is true that 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 happened of what Councilmember Floris Kell just stated?
That had been a great question for me to receive back when you were told that information. So.
Six weeks ago?
I don't know. For a long time, I tried to ask you what was the nature of what you were asking. You chose to go the path that you've gone, which is to not have any communication with with me about it and bring it to the dais and make those patently false allegations, you know, to the public. And so that's fine.
And so I guess
So I'm just asking some questions here. So what the statements that Councilmember Floris Kell is stating is stating tonight, Mayor, you're saying that all of that, what she has stated, is untrue?
The critical components that as it relates to a threat of termination, yeah, all of the details around that are fabricated.
Okay. And then my second, there is another party involved in this, Mayor Pro Tem Coach. Are you stating that that is the case as well, that what Mayor is saying?
Dex, I'm not really quite sure what you're trying to do here, but you were there.
Yes.
You know exactly what happened and why in which there's a meeting that was placed with Mr. Koontz. Now, if we want to get into specifics and turn this into a circus, I mean, this is what's happening. But the reason that Mr. Koontz was even met with was because earlier, the P and Z commissioners that were talking about resigning had to do with council members, not me, not the mayor, interfering with P and Z functions. There's emails where these P and Z commissioners resigned and state Councilmember Kell as the reason for their resignation. So when P and Z commissioners are resigning one after another, me as a former chair of P and Z, like you were a former chair of P and Z, who has a great relationship with Mr. Koontz, I wanted to know what was happening. I didn't go to P and Z commissioners who'd already been talked to by several members of council. I went directly to the staff member who oversees that, who I have a relationship with, who I served under for two years, and asked him what was going on. Because I want to know why P and Z commissioners are resigning while sending letters of resignation citing certain council members' actions and then take it from there. There was no talk of firing Mr. Koontz. I don't I don't I don't even understand taking a meeting with a director and taking bits and pieces of things that actually happened and then fabricating all sorts of stuff around it. You're using half truths to create stories that aren't real. And you participating in that, knowing that that was the situation, is highly upsetting to me. This is slanderous. This is unbecoming of you, Mr. Ellison, on council. You were there. There is nothing more transparent than had to have a meeting with a department head, asking them why the P and Z board is resigning in the glass conference room upstairs where everybody downstairs, everybody around can see, yourself included. So obviously, lies are being fabricated, are being pushed through, and we're turning it into something that is not real. So I am not going to defend myself to false accusations. That's ridiculous. You know it and I know it. Mr. Koontz left for whatever reason Mr. Koontz left. I don't know why. I didn't ask him about that. I asked him why P and Z commissioners were resigning in mass numbers and what the deal was with the emails. And you, Councilmember Kell, were stated by one of those P and Z commissioners that was sent to all of us as the reason for the resignation.
I got it right here. I can read it. It doesn't say that at all. I have the email popped up right here. Would you like me to read that?
Who's it written by?
This is Priscilla.
She doesn't state your name in there?
Yeah, I fill with her email. She sent that I was wasting her time. Like she mentions in her email, Yvonne's email is below. She's not professional. She is Yvonne is our district's two councilwoman and should be looking to fix our issues in her district and bringing them to our city manager. She doesn't say that's why. There's three, three paragraphs, four paragraphs prior to that, which I could gladly read out loud. But just just so we're clear, I am not the reason why she quit. And so if if we feel like I am lying, I will gladly, we can solve this by just filing an ethics complaint and then they can look into it because what I don't do is lie. Now, I repeated the story that Mr. Koontz shared with me when he was when I called him to say, hey, why are you resigning? But I am not by any means a liar. Let's make that clear. And if if we want to clarify that, I have no problem going to the ethics boards to write a complaint and they can find out because I won't be known as a liar. So please let me know if I need to proceed with that. This and this is this is what I don't get. Like, one of my favorite all time sayings is when you are in a hole, stop digging. Stop digging. Like, okay, I can, Mr. Sellers, if if you may, would you please answer the question of, did Mr. Koontz go in your office and complain about the conversation that he had with Mayor Mitchell and Mayor Pro Tem Coach?
Do you want me to answer that?
Sure.
No, he did not. If that's the story you were told, and I'm sorry that you were told that story. The truth of the matter is, after that conversation occurred, I called Mr. Koontz on the phone and asked him about the conversation, offered my support.
What did you say when you offered your support? What was it that you said?
I followed up with the city attorney and told her about the conversation and asked if there was any ethical wrongdoing.
And and may I ask what she stated?
She said at the time, there was enough information to keep her apprised that there was anything else.
May I ask what information you gave her?
From the conversation that I had had with Howard on the phone when I called him after and basically wanted to figure out what the conversation happened in the glass conference room was basically that very thing. What we're hearing tonight is is what I told Paige happened. Two members of council met with Howard in the glass conference room. Howard was upset. I was passing it along.
So Howard was upset for no reason? Or what was the reason you gave our city attorney?
I have a theory as to why he was upset. Would you like to hear it?
I would love to hear it.
I think the dysfunction of this council has reached an all time high. And we have lost our ability. We've lost our ability to communicate effectively as a group. We've lost our ability to communicate a team mentality. And the council, which gave direction to P and Z in an attempt to solve an issue like what's being proposed by the Parks Board that you guys are talking to about the Parks Board and the dysfunction associated with that, it's a similar thing on planning and zoning, where the there is not a clear direction coming to them. And when we did give a clear direction, immediately, multiple council members went to that board to try to clarify what the stated city direction was, which would be the actual violation. But certainly, the planning and zoning commissioners and the director in particular wouldn't feel very, they feel more like pawns, like we're trying to use them, like we're trying to manipulate them.
Oh, 100% they feel that way. I agree with that.
Right. So
I've been told.
Yes. So the stated direction of the council as it relates to the item that preceded this meeting was for them to go and check out CBD one and CBD two and make recommendations as to appropriate uses. The following meeting where they took that up, there were council members there who were elaborating on that and expanding the scope as opposed to allowing them to work through the issues. Multiple council members went to that meeting, made those conversations. Multiple P and Z commissioners became so exasperated over that process that they resigned, which compelled me, not of my not because I'm looking to get involved in P and Z business, it compelled me to go find out from the director what was going on. And yes, I did have tough questions. So it might have been an uncomfortable meeting. That's not the same thing as a meeting where direction was given or a meeting where threats were made. I'm involved in a lot of uncomfortable meetings with lots of different people throughout the week. So I didn't treat Mr. Koontz any differently. He just had a reaction and a desire and made a decision to go talk to another council member, give that council member a story. And I apologize if he told you that and you were repeating that without asking what, you know, my side of the story. I'm not calling you a liar. I'm saying you're willfully complicit in a narrative that he is producing without following up with the other side of the story. So I just don't think that's very considerate. I am really sad, frankly, that you've developed such a judgment against me personally. And I'm very sad that you've done it at the behest of other people. And you can't see that maybe other people have an agenda as well. We all have our own thoughts about, you know, each other's performance. What is direction? What is not? My experience is that the person who violates the rule to not give direction the most on this council is you. So if we're want to have that discussion, we can.
I would love to have that discussion.
Well, you gave Scott direction earlier in this meeting, just as an example.
So what? What was his? What was the direction I gave?
That you wanted all applications, the moment that he received them, to be emailed to you. That's called direction.
Did I do that in private? Is that I cannot? Can I not ask that?
You directed him.
And that gave everybody the opportunity to be like, no, we don't want to give it to her.
I understand that maybe you can't see what that is when you do that.
So if that is not right, if I am not allowed to do that, then say no. That's what I don't understand. You say I'm doing stuff I'm not supposed to, but yet there's no way to say no. And let's be honest, my distrust for you does not stem from this one incident. So yes, I am very sad that I gave six months of my life to trying to create a relationship with every single person on this dais, only to be lied to over and over again. Not by everybody, not by everybody, but by those that I have decided to disassociate with. That was not something conjured up from one conversation with one staff member.
I'm sorry, too. Councilor Ellison.
So it's been a lot of things said this evening. I was, I thought I did still have the floor and was asking questions, just trying to get an understanding of some things that are holes in my mind of what's going on. Turned out, I'm sure you meant no disrespect earlier, Mayor Pro Tem, by calling me by my first name on this dais. But I'll tell you what my objective was. So certainly, you know, I did see, as you mentioned, the two of you in the glass conference room with Mr. Koontz at the time. And I did, I was not in on that conversation. I was not in that meeting. I came in to hand some postcards that I thought were for you, but they turned out to be Robert Rizzo. But that was the extent of my time within that in that room. I will also state that I have spoken to two out of the three people that have resigned from our P and Z commission. And neither of them said that the CBD issue was had anything to do with their resignation. And you've mentioned that before, Mayor, and I have to say, I just vehemently disagree with that. Nothing supports that that was the reason for their resignations.
Well, that's not what I said it was. I said it was the dysfunction of the council.
So and then, but you also mentioned that this the direction of the CBD and there is multiple things. So I just want to clarify once again, I know I've said this before, that I was asked by Mr. Sellers to come to that meeting to help clarify the direction. I'm actually really glad that you did that because when I came into the meeting, there was given, there was direction being given about lines and parameters and all this different stuff. And I was like, that's not what the council discussed. That's not the direction the council gave. And I remember Commissioner Geta asking at one point, he said, well, what is the direction from council? I said, look at the agenda item. The agenda item or what was motioned during the meeting. Everything else that was spoken, I said, because I said, there's a lot of stuff that council hemmed and hawed and went back and forth over. But none of that was the motion and none of that's the agenda item. So if you're looking for what the direction is from council on this particular thing, either look at the agenda item or listen to what the motion that was made and voted on. And that's what Mr. Geta said two weeks ago at the council meeting, that he went by the direction of the council or what the agenda item says and not certainly by anybody there presenting that. So I just want to kind of clarify that, that I certainly, I was the one that went to that council meeting by per the request of the city manager to help make clear what the direction was, but certainly not on behalf of myself to to but certainly not on behalf of myself to, to share what I thought the commission should do. Uh, I certainly did tell them, uh, and it's public record because those meetings are public, that, uh, you know, they should be doing things that we, that have been said right here on this dais, that, uh, Planning and Zoning Commissioners should be not just waiting for agenda items and rezonings and things like that. They have the authority through the charter to review code, to make recommendations left and right. Uh, they can be knocked down left and right from council, but that, that is certainly within their, their purview. Uh, and that's, and that's what I relayed to them, that those are the things that they can do, uh, without council direction. But certainly with this one, it was about reviewing the uses of CBD 1 and CBD 2. But, uh, just going back to my line of questioning, uh, Mayor Pro Tem asked, he said he didn't know what my, my objective was and that I was being unbecoming. Uh, certainly that was not my goal. Uh, my goal was to try to understand, one, because, because I did see that, that interaction happen. I also, uh, me and Scott had a conversation about it. And, um, me and Scott had a conversation and he told me that Howard was very concerned about his job. And, uh, I said that, you know, what can I do to, to help? You know, I don't think, you know, I'm not unhappy with Howard's performance. I haven't been made aware that any of my colleagues were unhappy with Howard's performance. And I had a 30-minute conversation with him one day about it. And it, it was, that was certainly, um, disheartening. And I just don't want any staff member to be in that position or feel that way. Um, certainly if, if we have frustrations with a director or a staff member, there are appropriate ways to handle that, certainly by relaying that displeasure with Scott or, uh, putting on an executive session agenda item so that we can all, um, be privy to that and, and Scott can address that with us. Um, but certainly, you know, what was relayed to me from him and his concerns, it was definitely concerning. And so, uh, that, that's all I'm, in me bringing up and asking the question of you two was just to get your, your side of what, what, obviously what was stated, uh, here this evening, what I know in the conversations that I had and, uh, with both Scott and Mr. Coontz. And then, uh, just try to understand from you all's side, what, what was the objective on your end and what were you trying to accomplish? And how much of that is true or not true? Um, certainly I, I agree. I would love for Mr. Coontz, if he were here, to be able to share his side of the story and his perspective. Uh, but that's what I was asking, uh, of you two tonight. Certainly, uh, not trying to be combative or, uh, anything like that. But, uh, I, I do, I will say that, you know, based on what I saw and then the conversations I had with Scott and Mr. Coontz, I would like for that not to happen again, that type of thing. I think that, you know, once again, there, there's a proper way of, of handling any of our frustrations with the directors or staff. And that's just letting Scott handle it, you know? Just talking to him about your, your frustrations or your, your problems or anything like that with staff, allow him to address that, uh, the way he sees fit because these are his employees. Uh, and, or requesting, uh, executive agenda, uh, item to be discussed as a, as a group. And so I guess that's what I would just like to see going forward on these things. And, and that was my objective there. Certainly didn't, uh, was not an objective of frustrating some of my colleagues to the point where they would, uh,
Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
Be disrespectful or.
I think it was your objective.
Well, no, I, I think my objective is certainly that I just don't want to see that happen again. And I wanted to know from, from you two, how much of that did happen? How much of it didn't happen? And what we can do about not having that happen in the future? That, that is my objective. And, uh, I, I know you feel some type of way that it was a different, but I, I'm, I'm certainly just coming at a, a, keeping a certain tone. I'm not trying to be, uh, make any accusations, just trying to understand, uh, the full picture of what happened. And then, like I said, from what I, what I've seen and heard, I just think that we don't want those things happening again. Right? I, I don't think that, uh, if, if a director, because like I said, I did have a conversation with, with Howard and he was very concerned. Um, and, um, you know, I've had, you know, and so with that, that concern, I had that conversation with Scott. Then I had the conversation with Howard. And then I had the conversation with Scott again to let him know about that conversation. And, uh, certainly you, you might feel that was inappropriate, but, um, I know with my conversation with Scott was, I said, well, what, what can we do? Well, how can I help? And Scott did mention, uh, talking to, to Howard. And so, so I did. And I was happy to do that because, um, you know, I, I just feel like if there is a problem with a staff member, which I didn't have a problem with him at all. I don't have a problem with any staff member, really, um, that, that Scott should handle that. Scott should, should take care of addressing that, that issue. And, and that's exactly what I told Mr. Coontz. And I said, if there are my colleagues that are unhappy with you, they should have Scott address that with you.
The meeting with Mr. Coontz was not a result of us being unhappy with him. So.
I understand. I'm just saying that that was his, his side of it.
Yeah, that's right. You're going to bring it out and we're going to have this discussion here. So I give my side on the, on the record in defense. That's your objective. It's very clear what the objective is. So that's fine. If you want, we do these things in public. We're going to have, 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 have these kind of discussions. Uh, the political maneuvers, it's well done.
Well, I just said I should've been on executive session.
Well, that's, that's not what Councilor Forster.
I stated several times that my original request was for a meeting with Scott. That didn't happen.
You, you didn't accuse Scott, you accused me.
Accused you.
By lying about what took place during that meeting on the record publicly without discussing it first.
Okay, so if you feel like I'm lying, then by all means, I can do, I can file an ethics complaint and then you can just redeem yourself. That's exact, I think that would be the best way to go. I don't want, A, I don't want to feel like, uh, I was misguided by Mr. Coontz because his conversation was very sincere. I, I am almost offended and he called it. He called this. He told me, Yvonne, it is going to be hard for me to get up there. They're going to call me a liar. And I said, you know what? Just come anyways. Come and say, speak your voice. And he was ready that night.
Mr. Sellers had something, or Mr. Rizzo, if you want to go next. Scott?
Yeah, just real quick, um, I just want to relay something real quick. So there's seven of us up here. The seven of us make the decisions. No one has the voice of all the council. We all make these decisions together. And that's the way it's going to go for moving forward. I'm not saying somebody did something, somebody didn't do something. What I'm saying, moving forward, this is how it's done. We've got one employee, that's Scott Sellers. He's the one that when we have an issue with any one of staff, we get together as a sev, a body of seven. We meet with Mr. Sellers in executive session and we point out whatever issue it is. And we talked about it collaboratively moving forward. That's what we should be doing. That, if we're going to have the discussion, let's come up with a plan and move forward. And it's really not a plan. It's what's in our charter. That's the way it's supposed to be done. Point out, just point blank. That's what it is. So moving forward, uh, anytime somebody has an issue with staff, let's bring it together as a body. Let's figure it out. Let's get with our one and only ci, uh, employee as our city manager and we'll go through the chain of command. When we circumvent the chain of command, this, this is why we have these discussions.
Mr. Rizzo.
So let's just move forward.
We did not circumvent. I did not circumvent the chain of command.
I didn't say somebody did it. What I'm saying, moving forward, this is what we're going to do. I'm not blaming anybody. I'm not saying anybody's right or wrong. What I'm saying, this is the, the process that we follow moving forward. I'm not accusing anyone and I haven't pointed any fingers at anyone. What I'm saying, moving forward, so we can move forward and that's what our goal is, is to move forward, is just to continue to do it the right way. Let's work together as a body of seven and let's move forward that way. So that way we can, uh, continue to work with each other. I'm about moving forward as a city, not about moving backwards. So we, this is the way that is laid out in our city charter. So let's just follow that process moving forward. I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody. What I'm saying, this is the process moving forward, is all I'm saying.
Scott, just one second.
Sure, a couple of just items to clarify. When I did speak with Mr. Coontz, uh, he did express that he was concerned about his, his job. And I don't think he was threatened because I asked him if he felt like he was threatened with this job and he, he was not. He felt that the tone of the meeting, uh, was foreboding upon his future employment. I told him that there is a chain of command and that I had his back and that any action against him would have to go through me. And I supported him. And let the record reflect that I have up to his voluntary resignation when he found another position. There's nothing in a record that will show there was any punitive action taken against Mr. Coontz, just the opposite. Uh, his record would show that, uh, he was fully supported by staff up and through his resignation.
Scott, did, did at any point, did I or the Mayor Pro Tem ever direct or request for you to take any punitive action against Mr. Coontz at all?
No, sir. That isn't, no, he did not. I did have a meeting recently with Councilmember Flores-Kale prior to this issue coming up. I was not aware of what this issue was. She did ask me about council direction to staff. I told her I was not aware of that direction. Uh, and she said that she was aware of certain direction and I asked for that to be disclosed to me. Uh, she would not disclose that to me. And, uh, we, we ended the meeting with that not being disclosed until a couple of weeks later, after, I guess, the resignation of Mr. Coontz, uh, at which point I was made aware via email that, uh, you know, I was told that I should provide counsel fully as a body if there was ever a direction given, uh, through me by any one individual to staff. Uh, and this email was under the threat of being sent to the Ethics Commission, the Attorney General or the District Attorney, at which point I requested that any further communication on the matter be made by the council body, which is why it got placed on an agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I mean, Mayor, the fact you even asking those questions is ridiculous. It's, it's, it's clear now. I, I got a question for you. Uh, and you know what, Mr. Ellison? I've called you Dex many times from this dais as well. Our friendship has been long. And so whatever it is you want to do with this, that, that's up to you. You're, you're making your decisions. But calling you by your first name between me and you has never been disrespectful. So I can call you Mr. Ellison and I'll try to remember to call you Mr. Ellison all the time. It's hard when you're helping to create accusations that aren't true. But what I am, I'm just confused here because you're saying you don't want this to happen again. And I'm confused as to what this is that you are referring to. Because if this, that you don't want to happen again, is me to be able to speak to the planning director about P and Z? If that is what, what you don't want to happen again? You just said that you met with the planning director. You've met with Howard and spoke with Howard all the time because we would have the same kind of relationship with Howard. So I'm confused as to what this means that you don't want to happen again. Because I'm su, I, I'm sure it is not, not speak to the planning director that you have a relationship with.
Yeah, yes, sir. Absolutely. Uh, you're correct. That's not what I'm saying that I don't want to see happen again. What I'm saying that I don't want to see happen again, obviously, um, you know, I had a conversation, certainly I don't, I'm not saying that council should not have conversations with staff. But when it is one of their frustration with them and their performance.
That's not what the conversation was.
Yeah, okay, but let me.
I don't know how many times we're going to have to tell you that, but that's not what the conversation was.
If the conversation wasn't about that, okay. But.
I want to make it very clear, Dex. The conversation that I had was about P and Z members resigning.
Gotcha.
And asking why they were resigning.
And whether or not two council members in particular were way out of order by engaging, we didn't know for sure. We saw the meeting, but we were concerned about two council members in particular.
Did you read the email? Because I didn't meet with anybody. I sent one email with a video, with a link to the video helping them with the direction. I spoke of no direction. I said, here is a video. If you have any questions, let us know. One email.
All right, we're going to need a, we're going to need to call a point of order. We cannot have the public speaking. I'm sorry. This is an intense conversation. We're trying to get our way through it, but we have to keep it between us. Thank you.
So I just want to clarify since a question was asked of me. So, okay, I, I, I hear you and I, I understand that's what you're saying, uh, about how the conversation went. My, my concern, I guess, to hammer down exactly what I want to say and I want to see again, is that, you know, and certainly Howard's not here to, you know, say his piece, to say, say whatever it is. But I did have a conversation with him and he was very concerned. Obviously, Mr. Sellers just relayed that he was concerned. And I believe you when you said, and you asked Mr. Sellers a question, was there at any point that Mr. Coontz said that his, his job was directly threatened? And the answer was no? And I believe that. I 100% believe that. But Mr. Sellers did state that he, he made the comments to Mr. Coontz that he would have his back. He made the comments that he did, uh, reach out to the city attorney to see if there was a violation. So those things did occur, right? So that's all I'm saying is if it raised a flag enough in Mr. Sellers' head to ask the city attorney something that he felt, wait, this might be a little out of line. And that's what happened. And then the city attorney said.
Scott, is that right? Did you feel like something out of line was taking place? I mean, he's putting words in your mouth right up here.
I, I told Mr. Coontz that I would reach out to the attorney to make sure nothing had been out of line.
Did you feel like something was out of line? Were you aware that that meeting was taking place?
You, you weren't aware that the meeting happened until after it happened?
That's probably accurate, but I mean, a lot of, a lot of conversations happen with department heads that I'm not aware of, but to be fair.
Okay.
Well, to be fair, I don't know if I told you ahead of time. I, I would have or wouldn't have, I, I would never have hidden it from you. I just don't know if I did.
Okay, so I guess then, just to make it, uh, to really be fair to everybody, so, okay, so Scott didn't say, I guess specifically then, that he felt something was out of line, but he did feel enough to reach out to the city attorney? That, that's, we're all agreement with that, right? That, that's a fair statement. And so, and then, uh, there was a conversation between you and I about how frustrated and concerned Howard was as well. And, uh, we had a conversation about me talking to him, right? And that, that's, and that's what happened. And, and I did talk to him, uh, as a result of that. So, so those things happened. I did see and understand how, uh, how frustrated and, um, concerned Howard was. Now, was it legitimate concern? Did he maybe, uh, understand things differently than they, how they were discussed? Perhaps so, I don't know. But my point in, in that was he still felt this way. He still felt concerned and, and that his job was in jeopardy. It might've been not legitimate at all for him to feel that way. Right? But it still remains the fact that that director felt enough that, so he, he reached out to you to tell you about the, the conversation?
I think he reached out to James.
He reached out to James and then James reached out to you. So it was enough for a director to feel like that they needed to get their superiors involved, uh, be, after an interaction with council. So that, that's all I'm, I'm saying is that, that's what I, uh, was concerning So that's all I'm saying is that that's what I was concerning and I would not like to see again. Our directors feel like that they need to go up the chain of command because they feel like something, you know, they feel uncomfortable about an interaction with us. That's all I'm saying, certainly. Not saying at all, to clarify your question, Mayor Protem, was not that, you know, us not having conversations with staff and all these different things. I enjoy having conversations with staff. These are our schmies. I learn so much from them, and I appreciate their time and their energy and their institutional knowledge that they share with me. And I encourage all of council to learn from our directors. The point that I was saying is that obviously, from the conversation I had with Mr. Coons, the conversation I had with Mr. Sellers, and then what he has also stated about him going to the city attorney and things like that, that's where it's just, I guess, I felt like it was just a little too much. If we could rein that back in and just, I agree with Councilmember Rizzo. You know, let's, we all know what the standard barrier is. We know how to conduct ourselves, and let's just do that moving forward.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that we do know what the standard is or how to conduct ourselves. We all conduct ourselves differently with different tactics and methods of trying to influence department heads, especially when it's one private conversation with a department head with a council member versus another private conversation with the department head and a council member where that department head is saying different things to different people, leading to this inevitable result, bringing forth the frustrations that we already have because we have to make so many hard decisions up here all the time, taking advantage of that situation, whether it's councilmembers who are taking advantage of it or the department head, I do not know. I do know that the accusations that are being made are fabricated, so I do believe there is certainly some duplicity in somebody's motives, and I can't say which one that is.
I haven't made any accusations. I've just asked questions.
You've made implications, statements of implications about whether or not conversations were not appropriate, you know? And so it just, it just is what it is, I suppose. But I don't know how to be different. I'm certainly not going to always, especially as mayor, try to say that everything is always great and all of our department heads should always just feel so happy with their job performance. I've never been that way. I certainly haven't been that way in the last two, three, four years, and I don't apologize for that. Our community is very demanding of our departments. They want their government to operate efficiently, and it's not set up to operate that efficiently. It's not that easy to achieve those results. So I don't have that sort of mentality where I just try to say everything is great regardless of what I am perceiving in the public or in terms of execution from departments. And so I have relationships, longstanding relationships with every department head in this city, and they will all probably say about the same thing, that I'm, you know, I don't know what you'd say, but I don't do a ton of clapping and rah-rah-ing, and that's by design. I've said that budgets are designed for every department to be equally miserable, and I try to heap praise and, you know, take advantage of opportunities to grow sort of equally and fairly. So that's always been my mentality. I don't ever like getting in a position where staff is pitted against council or staff uses council against each other in order to absolve themselves of responsibilities. You know, at the end of the day, we're either all working together and trusting each other and trying to, and trying to build that team mentality or team spirit, or we're working against each other. And for the last couple of months, it's certainly become clear, at least to me, that at least a few of us are working against each other. And so I don't think, other than just to hash this all out, maybe, you know, pique everybody's interest into some of the things that happened behind the curtain, and certainly to make some accusations and have some gotcha moments, I don't really know what the end result of this is supposed to be. Councilmember Flores-Cale.
So speaking of fabrication, Mr. Coons said that all this happened on January 15th, 2021, but after researching my emails, it looks like the two P&amp;Z members did not give their resignation until March and April. So I don't know how time-wise that works that you had a discussion with Mr. Coons two to three months before the situation actually took place.
I couldn't tell you what month the conversation with Howard Coons was if you asked me.
No, not you, but he did, and it's been verified. So I guess my question is, if you don't really know, so it could be January, but when the resignations didn't come in for two to three months after that, how do you use that story to justify your actions towards Mr. Coons?
You're giving the dates, not me.
I am, and for some reason, they don't match up by months, not just weeks, by months. Additionally, if you guys are interested in listening to anybody that is on P&amp;Z, there is a member that is here, and he would be glad to speak out. I don't know what he wants to say. I don't know if it's against me, or, I don't know, but he's here and he's willing to speak.
Yeah, we're not going to bring up P&amp;Z commissioners and further create the division and discord that we already have. I mean, I don't know what the objective is, but if the desire is to...
The objective is to get it out in the open. And just to be done. And I know, I know that's never been the way. I get it. I completely understand that. That's why I brought this agenda item forward, because this has never been the way. But you know what? It can stop today. We can stop digging, and we can move on in a different manner. We can be united. We can come back next week, and we can all be on agreement that this is not going to happen, and this is, is there something that needs to be said? I'm pretty sure there's no side chat, but it's not like we all follow the charter anyways. Anyways, my whole goal of this was to get it out in the open so we can talk about it. I don't know if you, if us sitting up here and on staff and the attorney and the city manager don't realize this, but residents know. This isn't something new to them. They've seen. They have seen firsthand that our mayor yelled at the cap, or the president of the Police Association. Someone came up and told me that. They said they reamed him a new one. This is not a one-time isolated incident. And no, I did not want to bring that up, but I'm not going to sit here and be made to look like a liar. There is several issues that we have...
Then stop lying.
Okay, look, if you would like to call me a liar, then that's fine. I will back up whatever I say because I'm not a liar. What I am is I seek the truth and openness, and you're going to see all my cards on the table anytime. And I'm not just going to show you behind the scenes. I'm going to show everybody because that's what they are entitled to. That is why they voted for me. I ran off of transparency, not being professional, not being nice, not using curse words. I ran off of transparency, and so that's what I bring. And don't sit and act like this dais has been united prior to this. I have seen, seen arguments on this dais. I've seen people walk off. So to sit here and act like this is a one-time incident and you guys were so honky-dory prior to this is misleading, and that's a lie.
Okay. Is there any further substantive discussion? Otherwise, we're going to move on. All right, moving on.
Fix it.
Rehab.
All seven.
Rehab.
Nice.
Rehab, sir.
You got to go. You need it.
Six months, I'll pay for it.
Next up, agenda number 25, discussion of possible action to restructure official city task forces. This is a really kind of a follow-up from the discussion that we just had. You know, we've created a lot of task forces through the months, the last 18 months in particular. Those task forces have always been, you know, where the attempt has always been for, you know, for the council to be able to accomplish more by believing in each other, allowing for individuals from the group to work on behalf of the group, to go out and pursue objectives that are meaningful to the entire council. Sometimes, you know, and there have been times in the past where it seemed like such an idea was impossible. There's a couple of years worth of that. And then we had some success, starting with the Public Safety Center and a lot of the projects that we all collectively got behind. Those, in particular, several of those projects have, the big ones where the task force sort of conversations started are substantially complete or are past the point where task forces are required. And since then, we've continued to sort of create task forces. But, you know, as the months have gone by, the scope of the task forces has really changed a lot and the, expanded, I should say, and the requirement that the council really be behind each and every task force has not expanded. And in fact, we've gotten to a point now where, you know, for myself, I think it, you know, was a good season, but I think the majority or all of the task forces that we are currently pursuing need to be done away with, allow for us to get to a place where we are either leading more collectively here from this dais or where we can reassess how we wish to be effective as a group. I'm just not sure that the trust is there for us to be creating lots of different kinds of task forces. And so my recommendation is to either remove most or all of the task forces officially and then to allow ourselves to try to reassess down the road how we wish to accomplish things. Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, Mayor, with the task force for the Public Safety Center, for the Heroes Memorial, and I'm trying, I think I'm missing La Verde, I think that those projects are well underway. I think they're functioning well. I'd like to see those three task forces dissolved. One reason, so that all the council members will get information now instead of just three members. I think we're at the point where now the information needs to come to all of us, so I'd like to dissolve those three. I would like to recommend to dissolve the three task forces that I just mentioned.
Councilmember Tobias.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing this up. This was, this is very important for us to discuss. I actually was kind of looking into it, and basically was saying, to better serve the community at large with projects within our city, these are, again, my suggestions, recommendations referencing the council task force. Going forward, we're still going to have growth, and we're going to still have projects come up, okay? One thing, one suggestion, if the council is, likes this idea, is to utilize some of the boards that we have and the commissions. Let's say the Greg Park Task Force that was just really formed. Maybe we can utilize the Parks Board to assist with gathering that information and that research. And then having us, just a council member as only a liaison, only, just to get the follow-up. Special task force recommendations would also be, again, albeit at co committees with application process to allow citizens and residents to participate. Again, that would have to be any specialized projects that we want input from the community. We can look at maybe that as a suggestion. Again, if there are those kind of task force formed or we're utilizing the boards or the committees, we can have two council members on that task force or basically as liaisons only on that end. And then also to kind of go off of what Councilmember Rizzo says, let's set some time limits, okay? First, reporting council within 30 days of the first findings or the third council meeting of any kind of research to give everybody updated as far as what the goal is or what they found out. And then the final project recommendations brought to council, give that a timeline within nine months. That should give whoever is on these committees and boards, you know, we can have at least a timeline, you know? I think, because like what he's saying about the Public Safety Center, this has been going on for two years. But at least on these things, we can at least assign the boards or these committees some first reporting within 30 days, get everybody updated, any recommendations they have, they can give it within nine months to a year. And those are just kind of suggestions that I came up with.
Well, I would think that to that, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rochelle, are you going? No, I can wait.
I'm conflicted about this because I've seen the greatness that's come from the task force that we've had previously, but I also do see them becoming an issue as the dynamic changes on the council. And I personally feel that I don't need a task force to hold myself accountable to the projects that I feel passionate about. And I do feel that this would be a great way to make sure, to ensure that all information is being dispersed, that everyone has input and is able to contribute to anything that they feel passionate about, anything that they are inspired by, and just share their voice on whatever that topic or that project may be.
Any other thoughts? Councilmember else?
I'm certainly in agreement with Councilmember Rizzo about the Public Safety Center, La Verde, and Heroes Memorial, were the three task force, yeah. I think that they have done what the objective of those are, and I certainly think that everything else should be with the entire council involved on any final decisions on those. And I think that's kind of what's been happening as well. We've had a few different executive session things regarding it. So I'm certainly in favor of that. You know, as far as just generally speaking with the task force, I do find, having been on this council prior to task force and having been on this council when we've used task force, there's no doubt that we get a lot more done when we use task force. There's no doubt in my mind about that. And now, certainly, I think there's things we can clean up about it, and I think in some ways, we have been doing that the last several months, updates, reports back to the council more regularly rather than moving through a lot of stuff and then everybody kind of finding out. But just regularly, every other month or whenever there's substantive amount of information to share with the council, I think it's a great approach. That way, it keeps everybody in the loop. The task force doesn't go too far down a road and then get yanked back maybe by the council not agreeing with the direction. So having regular updates, even monthly, I think would be beneficial to it. Certainly, we could probably, you know, really hammer down on the direction to the task force and what the objectives are, and then putting a timeline. That's kind of what I was a little bit doing with the Human Services Grant, putting that two-month timeline on there. So it's a definitive time when we know this group can work and be back with a recommendation before that is dissolved. So, yeah, I think it really can work, and I think, you know, if we utilize our vision in workshops at the beginning of the year, outline some of the things, maybe folks can come in with, well, hopefully, people come in with their visions and ideas for the year, but maybe, you know, the things that they would like to champion. Because I'm, obviously, we know there's some certain things that are more of interest than others on the council. And so I think it's certainly engaging to be a council member when you have something you're so passionate about and to be a part of a small group really working to get that stuff ironed out. Because as we were saying earlier, as I was stating earlier, a lot of these things are hard to work out, you know, an agenda item and between the seven of us talking and different things. So I do think there's a lot of benefit to it. But I understand the heartache with some of the task force, but I think rather than dissolving them and getting away from them, improving upon them, I think would be my inclination to do rather than getting rid of them. But I certainly do agree with, and I'll certainly be happy to make a motion to dissolve the task force of the Heroes Memorial Park, La Verde, and Public Safety Center. So that's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. There's a motion, a second to eliminate the three parks has been, or the three task forces as has been outlined. Is there discussion on that motion?
Mm-hmm.
Mayor, Councilmember Flores-Cale.
Thank you. I think overall, task force are a really good idea when we want to get stuff done. However, I've been completely burned by it before. I just feel like even if I would have gone in the direction that everybody else wanted to go in with certain task force, that I didn't even get the opportunity to try to go with that. I was, I felt completely left out. I felt like I didn't see any of the plans until the very, I think I saw two. And I don't mean just the inside. I mean the inside and the outside. And I felt really disconnected, and my fear and frustration was, I'm going to have my name on a building that I don't even know what it looks like inside or out. So I feel like I should have had some say in that, and I didn't. So that alone created a big distrust for me because I felt like, man, this is a really, like, we're getting stuff done. We're getting projects done. We're working on it. But the failure to come back to the dais is a real issue because I, as somebody outside the task force, cannot ask anybody inside the task force what's going on because then that would be considered a quorum. And so because of that, I have to rely...
Um, and I don't mean just the inside, I mean the inside and the outside. And I felt really disconnected and my, my fear and frustration was, I'm going to have my name on a building that I don't even know what it looks like inside or out. So I feel like I should have had some say in that and I didn't. So that alone created a big distrust for me because I felt like, man, this is a really, like, we're getting stuff done. We're getting projects done, we're working on it, but the failure to come back to the dais is a real issue because I, as somebody outside the task force, cannot ask anybody inside the task force what's going on because then that would be considered a quorum. And so because of that, I have to rely a hundred percent on that task force to come back to me. And I don't think right now collectively as a dais, we are in a, in a spot to be able to do that. And so as much as I would like to support this in the future, now, I don't think, uh, right now is a really good time for any task force.
So are, are you saying we should eliminate all task force? Or are you saying the recommendations Councilmember Ellison brought forward would be something you would, uh, be amenable to?
Um, I'm going to be amenable to, to, to the three because my, my ultimate goal would be to get rid of all of them for now until we can kind of get things under control. And there, I mean, there's no procedure in, in these task force. We have no idea what we're doing. There is no, you know?
I, I wouldn't say that.
Okay, so.
We've built a public safety center, got a Heroes Memorial Park, we're building La Verde.
Just because you're yelling doesn't mean you're right. Um, and with that said, if I could finish my sentence.
And I'm not yelling.
If I could finish my sentence, we don't know what we're doing procedurally, right? So maybe we don't know that we're supposed to come back and maybe we don't know that we need to apprise other people of what's going on. And that's okay because that's just a mistake. We learn, maybe we bring some procedures back and then we come back and create task force to be bigger, stronger and, and do more. I'm not saying get rid of them forever. I'm saying what we have right now doesn't work.
So Councilmember Ellison brought up the notion of, uh, you know, reevaluating them and, you know, fixing what we think is broken. Um, so do, would you want to go down that direction? Or do you just want to do away with them?
Well, I think for now, I think we need to just kind of put a halt on it until we know what we're doing. Or, and when I say, when I say we know what we're doing, when we build a procedure.
Where Councilmember Ellison was going with his suggestions, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, so.
I thought he made some really good suggestions.
Okay, the, but again, they're just suggestions. There's, I mean, there's nothing saying that this is what we have to do.
All right, let's, um, we have three other members down here wanting, really wanting to weigh in. So I'm going to go to, I, I think I saw Mayor Protim first.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off of what Councilmember, uh, Flores-Kale was saying because I'm looking at the task force spreadsheet right now and there's two task force in my district that I had no idea existed, nor was I invited to, nor do I have any input on. So some sort of policy, some sort of procedure, if task forces do not dismantle tonight, needs to be in place.
Which two are those?
The CBS and Martinez Loop.
CBS.
CBS.
There's a CBS task force?
Exactly. We, we don't know these things and so that's another issue.
All right, uh, Councilmember, uh, actually, sorry, Mayor Protim.
I mean, I agree, there's a season for task forces. That's when, you know, they work best and they get stuff done when a council wants to work together and trusts. It's bored to go into task force into a smaller group to do the will of the overall council. I think that's what happened with the task forces that, uh, we're looking, that, that's, that's in the motion to eliminate tonight. Um, I think that that's, that motion is basically a moot point because those task forces are, they're already gone. They're, they're, they're done, haven't had meetings on those in, in quite a while. So again, that's, you know, we're, we're taking a vote on something that's already, already finished. Um, but there's a lot of task forces out there that, um, some people don't even know about. I didn't know about the two that you brought up right now. Um, we had a culture where we worked together and we, uh, did things for the greater good of the city by trusting each other, um, and finding camaraderie through vision retreats, uh, through, uh, collaboration, through trust, um, and understanding those things would come back. And, and the body always votes on everything to go through. So it's not like anything can go through that the body doesn't approve. Um, but yes, I agree. It's become apparent that, um, there's dysfunction and, uh, during that time, you just, we can't reduce it down to task forces unfortunately. Um, my favorite part of the meeting tonight was, uh, Leon talking about those projects and showing those pictures. I have so much pride in seeing those projects go through. Uh, it's, it's a really exciting time this past year with all the groundbreakings and everything that we're doing to, uh, improve the quality of life, uh, for the citizens of Kyle. And it's, it's been shown in what task forces have done over the past, uh, you know, year and a half, two years, uh, working together for the greater good of the city and then for the, the group as a whole. Um, and we've just never had problems with task forces. We've trusted everybody who's been on them. Um, we've known about them. And then those who haven't been on the task force, uh, have taken it upon themselves to make sure that they're educated. There was task forces that I wasn't a part of. Um, and I went out of my way to find out, uh, not through the task force itself, but through, uh, staff or, um, the people that we've hired to work on certain projects to find out what I needed to know, uh, to make myself comfortable with the direction. Uh, but I, I do agree that, um, it's probably best that task forces as a whole, uh, cease and until we can find some, uh, common ground, uh, fix some situations that the citizens are asking us to fix, um, and then come together and learn to work together again, uh, to get some good quality stuff done in the city.
Councilor Tobias, you want to, you want to go?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll be very brief. Again, that's the whole reason why I made the suggestion of utilizing the people that we already have on our boards. Okay, what are they doing right now? The Greg Park Task Force could have been with the Parks Board. They could have be right now working and getting those recommendations for you guys, okay? Same thing if we have the library, the library board. They could be working on the arts task force. They could be pu, not pulling you guys away to more meetings that you guys say you got to go to and utilize these people that we have on these boards. So that would be my suggestion on that. And just have one council member, whether it's in your district, you're right, Ms. Retchell. If it has to be in your area, you are the liaison for that, for that board to get the updates. And they present this information to us the, within 30 days or the third council meeting and keep us updated. And we can ask them those questions, which would free up your time, my time, mayor's time, to be dealing with our constituents and our residents on the real problems that are going out there. Instead of sitting in meetings and, and constantly not being available. I'm just trying to make up better suggestions. Everybody say, well, what procedures can we do? This would be mine, utilizing the people that we already have on these boards. Even if we have to create another AdCon committee through an application process, at least we're in, again, allowing the citizens to have a voice in whatever projects are going on and we're keeping them updated. And again, when we have our, uh, retreat coming up this, uh, spring, or actually this, earlier this year, next year, we can bring those boards to this and we can give them the direction and they can give us their ideas and we can all come together on that end. That's just what I'm looking at, a suggestion from there. And we don't have to, we be worrying about personal task force. We can put it on the boards that we already have assigned to these areas.
Councilor Ellison.
I think that's a great point, uh, certainly, um, about the districts. We have three district representatives and I think certainly they should have the first right of refusal for anything that's in their district. Um, I like the idea of incorporating the boards and commissions into the task force. I would just say though, I, I, I would see more than rather just, um, having an, uh, an objective or a task and just handing it to the board. I, I'd like to, I think it'd be kind of cool to have two task force of council and that board of commission. That is now, that is the task force. They go back and can report to, to their board. We can come back and report to our board. But I really do think that we just need, we, we never did this with the task force. And I think this was, uh, our ultimate fail, failure on this is just creating a standard bearer and a policy for what the expectation is so that everybody understands, you know? Whether it's, you know, the task force has to come back with updates every month regardless if there are updates or not. They have to have a, uh, an update on their, uh, task. They, uh, you know, they're just different things like that. So everybody feels included, they're up to date on what's going on, uh, and various things like that. Um, I, I think there is a way forward if we want to, uh, continue to move forward with these task force, getting a lot of work done and, and including our boards and commissions, including our great staff. And honestly, I, I just kind of moved the discussion forward here. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff, uh, to come up with a policy for the council to consider, uh, pertaining to task force that, one, keep in mind the legalities of the Texas Open Meeting.
Councilor Ellison, there's already a motion on the floor.
Oh, I apologize.
It was your motion.
We're in discussion. I did, it's been so long. I'm sorry. Uh, so it was to eliminate that, okay? Well, all right, well, y'all know I've got a motion coming, but yeah, we can vote on that.
Councilor Rizzo.
Just to finish on that motion, um, this is just to make it official. That's the reason I'm bringing this forward. These task force haven't been meeting. I just want to make it official. The reason why is to clear up some of the clutter we have. We've got so many task force, uh, on the books right now. Let's start making them official, getting rid of them on the books, uh, on a vote.
Okay.
And that way we know that, that's why I brought it forward.
Any, any other discussion on the, the motions? Everybody clear on what it was? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Uh, now I would like to make a motion. Uh, the motion I would like to make is that we, uh, disband all task forces until such a time as council brings back a proposal or staff that council agrees to, uh, for, uh, how we proceed forward. Moving on, Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw as to discussion on that motion.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Ellison.
So just to clarify, so the, the, you're proposing that we dissolve all existing task force, any and all that exist, until such a time that either staff initiates a policy or a council member brings forward a policy for the council to review.
Until such a time as the council takes a vote to re-establish a policy.
Okay, so the only way to move forward would be either staff or council bringing forward a policy that the council would vote on and, and.
If staff does it on their own, they can. If council wants to bring back and make present proposals, you're, we're all good at that. We know how to, we know how to bring back policies. So Councilmember Tobias, I think some of your proposal there is actually really good. Uh, it would be a good item to bring forward with some recommendations for specific, like Greg Clark Park. I heard you say you wanted to give that to the Parks Board. I, I think that, I think, I think you're on the right track there to bring some of those items back and we can discuss individually how, how we want to handle those items. So, is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries five to two. I have to accuse on this one, so.
Item 26, an ordinance demanding chapter 53 zoning of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 10.1 acres of land to retail services, District RS, and approximately 34.84 acres of multifamily residential R33 for property located at 2139 IH35. Um, this item has been postponed from previous meetings. It does have a public hearing. The public hearing has been left open from previous meeting. If anybody is wishing to speak on this item, I will go ahead and ask them to come up now. Seeing none, uh, I'm going to go ahead and leave the public hearing open because the item, uh, is to be postponed until the first meeting in November. Do we need to take a vote on that or do we just postpone it till November, Paige?
Just postpone till November.
Postpone until November. Okay, uh, item 27, executive session. Councilmember Bradshaw.
It's actually Councilwoman Tobias.
Tobias today, okay.
Well, thank you.
We have one, we have one item left. Scott on, for that one? Okay. Do you have it?
Yeah.
Jennifer, do we need this for?
Pursued to chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any of all the following topics, pending or complicated litigations, or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to section 551-071, homestead exemptions and other tax rate freezes and exemptions.
We are now in executive session. Motion to reconvene?
Second.
There is no, uh, action taken in executive session. Uh, there'll be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Adjourned.
Adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.